All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 6, 2022 Select Board Regular Meeting. You are all witnessing my first time chairing a meeting, so please be patient. And we wish our best to our Chair. Let's start with the...oh, do I need to make the announcements on the audio and video recording? I don't know the exact wording, but if anyone is doing an audio or video recording of this meeting, please announce it to the Chair. Am I missing anything, Mike? Okay, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I will start with the today's announcements. Absentee ballots for annual town election. The annual town election is approaching on Tuesday, June 14, 2022. The deadline to request an absentee ballot to be mailed is Wednesday, June 8. Deadline to request an absentee ballot in person is noon on Monday, June 13. Please contact the Town Clerk's Office at 413-565-4103, or email kengram@longmeadow.org for additional information. The election will be held at the Long Meadow Community House, 735 Long Meadow Street, Long Meadow, Mass., 01106. Polls will be open between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Board and committee applications for open vacancies. Residents interested in serving on a Long Meadow Board or Committee can visit www-longmeadow.org/civicalerts to view the current vacancies list for annual interviews and appointments. Here you will also find the online application to serve on a town board or committee and specific details about the mission of each appointed group. For additional information, please email admin assistant at longmeadow.org. All right, and we have some board and committee interviews. First up for the Board of Health, we have Gregory Villania. This approach. Did I say your name right?
I'm Greg Villania.
Villania. Tell us about yourself.
I'm looking for a reappointment to the Board. I'm a physician at Bay State Medical Center. I'm a heart failure and transplant cardiologist there for 15 years. Served for the last year and a half on the Board, and I'd like to ask for a reappointment.
Okay. Any questions?
Dr. Villania, I appreciate you serving and thank you for coming in. I'm going to ask you a little bit, though, about the Board's response to COVID-19 and where we look, see us going forward. I think it's important that we take this opportunity for the people at home to hear what may be yet to come and kind of your thinking on the process.
Do you have a specific question that you want me to address, or just in general?
Specifically, I mean, the mask mandates, are they over? Are they coming back? Did you support them when they came in? And how do you see that? What's your decision process should we need to go back there?
So I think we sort of take it as a month-by-month, you know, week-by-week issue. Clearly, we've kind of gone back and forth on masking. That's related to the local spread. I think we have a lot of information from public health, not only here, but what we witnessed kind of on a day-to-day basis in the hospital. You know, the mask mandate, I think, served a purpose when we had it, especially at the beginning of the pandemic, and it's changed throughout the pandemic based on how many people have been vaccinated, what the level of disease is locally. It's also varied based on the level of illness that the community could have from the disease. So as things have transpired over the last two and a half years, as you've seen locally and also nationally, mask mandates have kind of gone mostly by the wayside. I think there are some communities that have kind of reinstated them based on their local spread. I think from the beginning, we've encouraged people to get vaccinated. That will probably continue. My guess is vaccinations will kind of go on for an indefinite amount of time. It may change as far as what the variants are and what kind of vaccinations we have available to us. I think, you know, what I can say is it's unclear in the future. We sort of take it as it comes. We don't know if there's going to be another surge in the summertime or in the wintertime, but I think the promise which the Board serves is to look at the local data and make decisions which we think are appropriate at the time.
Thank you.
Just a question. So as you look at your role on the Board of Health, is there anything that they do that seems of particular interest to you?
So I think, you know, we're mired in a pandemic, but I think local Boards of Health often are there to do preventative health. You know, I think that's something that we've spoken about but have not been able to focus on because we, you know, clearly are dealing with something that's more emergent. You know, I, as a cardiologist, focus on more end-stage disease, but in fact, am very active with prevention, you know? So things about, you know, looking at obesity rates and blood pressure checks and exercise and getting people into aerobics, like fitness in the gym or fitness in the swimming pool, which I don't think we use or utilize enough for our local community. Those are things eventually that, you know, public health and public boards should be looking at. So I think that's something that we should be focusing on in the future. It's a more, you know, if you look at the data, people die of cardiovascular disease more, even during the pandemic, more than the pandemic. So these are still things that are, you know, important and should be focused on in the future.
Well, you definitely would have support from at least this member of the Board. One of the things that we did find out about COVID is if individuals who had the hardest time with it were those who weren't in good shape and those who had not been taking care of themselves. And so promoting public health in that way, you know, would be really great thing to add to the Board. So thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, I want to thank you for serving on the Board the last year and a half, and I'm glad you are interested in continuing.
No problem. Thank you.
So the process is that we can't vote for at least seven days, so generally, we don't vote until our next meeting.
No problem.
So you'll hear from us then.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Yep. Next up for the Building Committee, Vincent McPartland for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2025.
Good evening. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for coming in. Have you served on the Building Committee before?
For the last three years.
Okay. And what have you been doing on the Building Committee?
Well, there's a lot been going on in town with the Building Committee in the last couple of years, namely the DPW and the Adult Center. So that's taken up a lot of time. And now, of course, moving into the future, we're looking at other renovations, police station, school issues, various. So there's a lot to be done moving along.
And you feel that the Building Committee has been effective in your time, working well?
I think the Building Committee has been very hardworking. I especially give credit to my colleagues, but boil, you're not supposed to sing a lot of people, especially Mary Beth Bergeron, who's really, you know, just done a marvelous job keeping things together and, you know, keeping us, you know, on mark with the many, many issues that occur with the Building Committee.
Any other questions? Tom?
Well, as far as, you know, those are new construction buildings, and we have a number of buildings that are, we may have to do some updating on, you know, Town Hall, Community Center, so forth.
No question.
Greenwood. And so how do you feel about working with keeping older buildings in circulation, so to speak?
When you look at the history of the town, we have so many beautiful buildings, you know, starting, you know, with the Town Hall, with the Community Center, that it would be ashamed not to keep those up and keep them, you know, to standard. Certainly a lot of work to be done. Certainly costs a lot moving ahead, but I think it's really important. One of the, one of the buildings that we need to pay more attention to is the old Town Hall. A lot of work needs to be done there. So a lot, we have, we have a lot on our plate as a town.
I do. Okay. Well, thanks for volunteering.
Thank you.
Mark?
No, I've dealt with, no, I've dealt with Vincent on the Building Committee, so I don't have any more questions.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
No state of policy against Yankees fans?
I was hoping someone would bring that up. Thank you.
Excuse me. Next up, Council on Aging Board of Directors, a three-year term, Saul Firestone.
I thought it was Fine Stione.
I'm sorry.
I thought it was Fine Stione. Italian, I thought it was a Fine Stione.
I'm a Fine Stone. Good, good. Okay.
Saul, nice to see you as always.
Yep.
Thank you for your interest. Can you tell us, tell us about yourself a little bit and what you'd like to, why you'd like to serve on the Board of Directors?
You don't already know?
Well, I know, maybe somebody else.
Saul Firestone, 471 Frank Smith Road. I've been in town since the early, mid-'60s and served on several committees and have been on the Board of Directors of the Senior Center, now the Adult Center, since '90s. I've been there several terms.
Great. Any questions from the other Board members? Mark?
I'm going to bring up the elephant in the room, Saul. So the elephant in the room is Faloca and other funding agencies and the Council on Aging. How should, in your opinion, the Council on Aging interact with any of these private funding agencies?
No problem at all. There's plenty of room for helping the Senior Center, the Adult Center, with finances. We know that the budget does not cover all the expenses that are needed for a center that's going to be what we want it to be, what everybody in this room, well, at least I know about you folks, want it to be. And, and so each, each, the Faloca, and by the way, I have to say that I'm a member of the LAHCCF. Am I got it right? Maybe, Mary Beth?
You didn't.
LAHCCF. And so, but I've long advocated that we have, there are three sources of funds for the center, and they both, Faloca is one, LAHCCF is another, and then there is also a fund that goes directly to the Adult Center if people want to make donations. But we each have a way of getting money and the way in which we use it, and it's helping. Both Faloca, believe it or not, is existing, raising money and providing funds for programs, which they've done all along, and they pay for the voice that comes out. Our fund is bigger because we went to the whole community in a big fundraising, I never was a fundraiser, but I became one because it was important to be part of building a center and providing for the center that I worked hard for many years to get. Unfortunately, the pandemic has raised a problem with me. I don't go to the center as much because people aren't wearing masks, but I continue. Sorry, I have a mask on. Infections in the state of Massachusetts, believe it or not, and I get reports on the computer, every three days, for three days running, multiple figures, four figures, and it's been as high as 6,000 in a three-day period. Deaths haven't been that high, but they're in double figures now.
Thank you, Saul.
Thank you, Saul.
Well, I don't know why I brought that up. That's because I have a mask.
It's worth bringing up. Tom?
Well, I just, I know you've done a lot of good in this town, and we appreciate you volunteering for this position.
Well, I just want to say that you wonder why I continue to serve. Well, I have been committed to working for seniors ever since I got on that Board and certainly worked hard with all the other members of the Board, as many of us as could, to get the new center. And, but I think I provide stability that is needed on that Board. We lost a few prominent people who resigned, and they were prepared to serve in the leadership roles, and I just want to make sure that precedence is followed when needed and bylaws are followed. I mean, I believe I lend some stability that's needed. We're a Board to help the Director, who happens to be here, and we're an advisory Board, but we want to be as strong of an advisory Board as we can, and I think I lend the kind of stability that we need to do that.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Saul.
Thank you, Saul.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. I survived another interview.
You don't know that.
Well, I got through the interview.
Well, that's true.
And I think I did pretty well.
All right, we have two interviews now for the Cultural Council for a three-year term expiring end of June 2025. Roland Hawthorne first.
You know, you could do them both together.
Oh, sure. Evelyn Pratt, line up. Okay, thank you. Mark, do you have a question?
I just, maybe they could just introduce themselves quickly, and then I've always got questions.
Yes, please.
I'm Roland Hawthorne. I live at 33 Chandler Avenue. That's the little street behind the spa. And enjoyed the service there very much, and I think we lent it a hand that was welcome. And I'd like to apply to have another term on the Board.
Ms. Pratt?
I'm Evelyn Pratt. I live on Warren Terrace. I got appointed to do like filling positions, basically, so I did my last two years on the Board. So I'm just re-upping for the next three on the Board. It's a lot of fun. It's basically one of the best committees because you just give away money and make people happy. So I'd like to continue to be a part of that.
Anything in particular you've been, had the Cultural Council's done on either your terms?
Sure. I mean, we do a lot of great stuff. We support things in the library. We support things in the middle school. We had a writer in residence do at the middle school this year. We support things like musical guests at the churches and on the green and just all kinds of different art initiatives in town. I think that's what's great about the Cultural Council is it really does support events for all of the ages in the entire town, which is kind of fun.
Yes, we've, we've allocated or been able to allocate $10,000, almost $11,000 to next year's, the rest of this year, next year's events for the city that includes schools, the library, the Senior Center, town events, and it's a chance to get music, literature, fine art, entertainment, and history back into the society that the children are growing up in. And so I think it's a very worthwhile organization. We had applicants for, let's see, we had, we had people, there were 36,000 of us last year, and we only had $11,000 to give out. So it's quite a process to weed out what we think will be best for the town. And I think we've done a very good job of it. It's been well received.
Okay. Mark?
I have no questions. I think it's a great, great organization. My only comment would be, you know, with the demand, three times what the supply is, you might consider, although I make no promises, applying to the town for direct funding. I know your funding all comes from the Mass Cultural Council.
Right.
You know, but maybe there's money from the town. I don't know.
Well, that'd be a good thing to explore. That would be a good thing to explore.
But it ought to be requested if you think they're, if you think these are worthwhile?
Yeah, no. We also, there's a bill going through that's asking for more money to go towards the Massachusetts Cultural Council to disperse into town. So if you guys want to call Eric Lesser and tell him to make sure that that gets passed through, that would be great.
Great. Thanks for your.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next for the Energy and Sustainability Committee, a three-year term expiring June 2025. Minu Terrani. Hi, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Minu Terrani. I have a bachelor degree in petroleum geology and a master's degree in engineering in, it was called agribusiness, when I did it. These days, they call it world resource management, and a PhD in business in strategy and international business from Arizona State University. I've been a member of this committee, and because I'm very much involved in conferences, I brought one of the booklets, if you want to take a look at it. This is the new one coming in in June, Green Cities. That's what I call it. I licensed that phrase. So, and I get the scientists together from different countries and from different areas, architecture, science, math, biology, business, and energy, so forth, because we need to educate our younger generation to make sure something is left for the future generations. Through the past two years that I've been the member of the committee, several of my students, they have conducted internship research, which is a requirement for their degree with the committee, and they have presented the results to the committee, and I've had tremendous, actually compliments regarding the research they've done in the greater Springfield area, including Long Meadow. And the most recent research that is going to be presented a few days from now, next week in our committee, it has to do with the San Francisco, the greenest city in the U.S. versus Canada, versus Zurich, the greenest city in the world, and then we want to know why not our area. And something that really surprised me, the research, our area, Long Meadow and Massachusetts, the number one cause of pollution, it's not buildings, it is not industries, it is private autos. So that was a really revealing information, and so I think our committee is working on electric charging stations. Hopefully, we're going to get that, and if we develop our train and public transportation and bike routes, these are the areas that my students and I, with the committee, we are working on.
Do you think that Long Meadow has an opportunity to use solar power in a greater way?
Solar power, absolutely. The other thing is wind power that, as you know, I teach in Rhode Island, but I've been living in Long Meadow for 20 years. Rhode Island, Block Island, has the only one offshore wind farm. And as you know, Massachusetts is going to be the second one. We're going to have a huge offshore wind farm off Martha's Vineyard. But wind energy and, and I, since my research, my undergraduate, about energy, wave energy also, which can produce five times more energy than solar and any other form of energy. And Massachusetts' coast are prime examples and prime locations for doing so. So hopefully, we can come up with what we call green energy, non-fossil fuel energy.
Any questions, Mark?
Yes, thank you for coming in. You mentioned, said your students have done some studies. Where do you, where do you teach or where do these students?
I teach in Roger Williams University in Rhode Island. When I moved to Massachusetts, I taught in Western New England University. I was in charge of international business programs, but unfortunately, at the time, Springfield was not the place for international programs. So I started all kinds of exchange programs with France and Germany, but the international students, they came in and they left us. So Roger Williams, I started the program in Roger Williams International Business. I have 75 majors in it.
So it's the students from there who've done some work supporting the?
A lot of our students, actually, they do come from Massachusetts, so they have done a lot of research, and it's eye-opening for them also, and that's what we want. And a few months ago, I had a conference through our library, through our committee, through our library for the entire town, and I had colleagues from Switzerland, from Penn State, Arizona State, Germany, and myself. We presented how we can make our city green.
Thank you. Tom, any questions?
No. Thank you for your, your interest in the committee.
Thank you.
You sound overqualified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And for the Historic District Commission, a three-year term expiring June 2025, Albert Hoffman. Hi, Mr. Hoffman, could you introduce yourself?
Sorry?
Could you introduce yourself?
My name is Al Hoffman. I live on 909 Long Meadow Street, which is one of the historic buildings in town. We purchased that about three years ago, and I'm, I'm very, very interested in continuing the historical society and the activities, and I'm, and I'm a very strong believer that that history has the ability to teach us a lot, but we, we somehow don't learn as much as we certainly could from history, and I think, I think this, this position would, in its own little way, help to, to continue that.
Any questions from the Board?
Mr. Hoffman, thank you for, for working with us. A question I have is about expansion of the Historic District. The Historic District Commission has responsibility or authority over, well-defined area, but from time to time, we see a need to, you know, grow that area. What are your thoughts about that and, you know, maybe process or whatever it is?
My initial reaction is positive to that, assuming that it, it ties in and makes sense, and I don't know where you draw the line as far as a age of something that you're going to try to preserve, but I'm certainly a proponent of the district, and if the district can be helped by expanding, I would certainly be supportive of that.
In general, it's, it's been with the support, I don't know if it's endorsement, but the support of the homeowners whose homes you'd be bringing into the district. The only thing I'd remind you is the Historic District for, you know, someplace like Tulsa, Oklahoma, has a very different age constraint than the historic district for Long Meadow. So we shouldn't get too hung up about 17th century homes as being necessary to be in the Historic District.
No, not at all. Not at all.
Sometimes it's, but generally, it's been with the, we've done it once or twice since I've been on the Board, and we've done it with the support and, in fact, endorsement of the homes that are brought into it. But it's a good, I think it's a good idea.
Well, the reality is with every, with every generation, the historical buildings change because all of a sudden, something that may have been built in 1920 and 1940, you wouldn't have been thinking much about it the day you would.
Right, yeah. And I think that some of the companies that try to operate in town don't have a lot of consideration for the historic elements. You know, I have a house a couple doors down from me that was built in the 1700s, and, and they stuck this big, you know, electric meter right on the front corner of the house, and every time I go by there, it bothers me, and I know they're going to say, well, just put a bush in front of it, but historic homes should have some protections, and I think that folks like yourself on this committee, you know, do a good service to the town. So I thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, for the Zoning Board of Appeals, a Stephen Bennett, and two terms, which one is?
You have the five-year term.
We get to decide.
Yeah. I've had a, I think I've had like a few. I think this is my third.
Oh, no, sorry. I'm looking at our sheet. There's two terms listed. Mike puts it up. Sorry, so you've, you've said you had previous terms on the ZBA?
Yeah, I've been on the zoning board probably 13 years. I think my first was a three-year as an associate, and then a couple as a main member.
Okay.
So that's what it is on the zoning board, there's a five-year term, and then there's a three-year associate, non-voting member.
Okay.
Right, so I'm a regular member, so this is going to be my, I believe, my third five-year term.
Okay. And again, just to start at the beginning, introduce yourself.
Steve Bennett.
Okay. And you're?
I'm for another five years.
Yeah, okay. And have you found the, been enjoying the work on the ZBA? I know our town doesn't have as much as some other things, some other towns surrounding. So what, what kind of things have you seen before you?
We do everything. Most of the properties in town are non-conforming, so they get turned down by the building department for a building permit, and then they have to come before us for relief to get a special permit. And so because most of the properties don't have the proper setbacks, you know, we typically, before COVID, we were very active. And then we do some variances, which are, you know, harder to get. You have to show where your property is different from every other property in town.
Mark?
Mr. Bennett, I appreciate your work you've done on the ZBA, because I know how much work there is on it, because I watch how much. Is your personal take on leaning toward the homeowner or leaning toward the abutters when it comes to variances? Because most of what you, as you said, most of what you deal with are variances. And I'm thinking about?
The other way around. Most of what we do are, are special permits.
Right, okay.
And then we have the occasional variance.
Yeah, I'm thinking about the person who wants to put an addition on their house that's non-conforming, that kind of stuff. So how much do you personally look at comments by a butters or neighbors?
Well, I mean, I would say the majority of times, nobody, no butters come. Once in a while, somebody will come and, you know, some people that come just don't like change. So when you talk to them and it finally comes out like they don't want the guy to put up second half of a second story on, where he's already got two stories already, and they don't want him to look into their backyard. And he's gonna do another second story over his garage this time. So now instead of two windows that look from second floor, he's gonna have three. And the abutter in the backyard says, well, I don't want him to look in my backyard. But then when, you know, when you talk to him and he realizes, well, they already have two windows looking into your backyard if they wanted to. Um, one more, will that really matter? You know, most of the time, people say, yeah, you're right. But um, you know, we take that into consideration, sure.
Thank you.
The, the other big struggle is that, uh, you know, we don't really have any room in town to expand to a great extent. And, and so we look at when homeowners say they're gonna put a second level on and so forth, that increases the tax base for the town. And, and that's really all we have to go on as far as, you know, expanding the amount of money we're gonna have to, to cover our budgets as the price of everything seems to go up. Um, and so it's important, but then how do, how does the zoning board approach this in a way that sticks with the character of the town? I mean, do you guys talk much about that when it comes to designs that come forward or?
Well, so what exactly is your question though?
Well, the question is, you know, bal- find a balance between keeping Long Meadow looking like Long Meadow and also allowing expansion of people's home property.
I mean, some of that doesn't, uh, some of that is actually whoever's actually writing the bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're kind of like just seeing that the bylaws are applied properly. So, you know, if somebody wants to like, you know, make their house a much bigger footprint and if they can, because they fall within the setbacks, then we don't have any jurisdiction to say, nah, that doesn't really look good in the town. The laws, I think, would have to be changed in certain things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and a, a good example of that probably would be, you know, a lot of small houses that have really big lots. They might have a three acre, three-quarter acre. And they have just huge amounts of setback, like, you know, and they could literally build a big house on that as long as they're within the setbacks. And that, you see that all over town. You know, you go up along a lot of the streets where I live and they take a 1,300 square foot house and they turn it into a 2,300 square foot house. And they're not going into any setbacks. In fact, if they're not going into any setbacks, they wouldn't even have to come before us. They just go right to the building department. The building commissioner looks at the plan and says, well, okay. Because that's, he has to.
Mm-hmm.
It's different, like if you're in a historical area, they have a lot more input.
Yeah.
Because there you have to, you can't even change your windows without getting permission because their windows can't be changed, I guess.
Has, has any issues come up that you guys have discussed that need to be addressed in a bylaw, bylaw change?
Um, well, you know, we just went over a whole packet of different things that we either agree, we want to change the wording, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, I just wonder if you ever, so I guess part of it would be the board would want to know if something came up where you said, gee, this, you know, there's a bit of a conflict. You know, the zoning law says this, but this seems really good. And it seems unfair to either the, the builder, you know, the, the property owner or to their butters. And maybe there needs to be a bylaw change. You know, it would be important for us to know that.
Well, sometimes we talk to the planning board about things like that.
Oh, good, all right. Great.
And then it goes from there, wherever it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Anything else, Mark?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennett. Appreciate you coming in and talking to us.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Levine, if I may, I talked to Steve, uh, Mr. Moritz about this before. Uh, Mary Beth is actually here for also a building committee interview. Uh, it made it late, so it wasn't able to make it onto the agenda. But if you want to have her.
Ms. Bergeron?
Should I stay?
Oh, no, we, uh, we have to consider and we'll vote at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
My term is up June 30th, so.
Right. It'll be before that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now please introduce yourself.
Yes, Mary Beth Bergeron, uh, 497 Inverness Lane, here in town.
Mark, any questions?
Where do I start? Where do I start, Mary?
I knew you were gonna say that.
No, I, I, I think it's important. You know, we, we're looking at, in the coming year, I think there's gonna be some action on schools and the school system and the state, you know, MSBA has their own requirements for building committees for, for the schools. But now that the, the, you know, we, we brought together a, the building, permanent building committee to really look at DPW and a, and an adult center. Where, where do we, what are the things we go from, not here, and I know Vincent said a couple of things, but you know, what are, what are we gonna be working on as part of the building committee, permanent building committee over the next two years?
Well, that's a pretty broad question, frankly. Um, and some of that I will turn kind of back into the select board's hands. Um, when the permanent building committee was established, uh, three or four years ago, uh, we received a directive from the select board, um, that we would be responsible for that would exceed $50,000 and that we've kind of used as a criteria. And also to advise the select board and the town manager on use of buildings and potential work that might be needed. Although we were certainly very tied up with the DPW in the issues that were in the construction of that particular building and the overrun because of the asbestos issue. And currently are continuing to work on issues over at the adult center. Um, I do think that the building committee has proceeded to inspect their certain buildings within the town of Long Meadow and made recommendations and reports on the condition of the buildings as we saw them, not from an engineering perspective, from an, but from an overall building condition perspective. So for example, I think Vincent brought this up, uh, the old town hall, although we had inspected that building a couple of times and had issued a report on that, um, it didn't seem to move forward at all. So under the, uh, under the umbrella of the building committee, um, we went to community preservation and asked for funding to hire an engineer to identify more clearly for the town, the structural issues that are exist, that exist there. Um, and to secure an estimate for those repairs. Now, we sort of did that on our own without any directive from the select board. Um, but under the um, directive that you issued, felt that it was part of our responsibility to report that to the town and to make some forward progress on, on identifying the potential future expenditures for that building, if in fact the town voted and approved that um, as the oldest municipally owned building in the town. So I, I see where the void right now is. Um, for example, capital planning and community preservation and the town subsequently approved expenditures for the municipal buildings. Um, and where, we need to know, where does the building committee fit within that umbrella? So to use a good example, um, is it the building's committee's responsibility to oversee that construction, to inspect it from time to time as it progresses? Is it the responsibility of the building committee to review any contracts that are issues or RFPs? Is it the building committee's responsibility to keep in touch with the DPW facility staff um, and the town manager as to the progress on each of those projects? Um, personally, if you have a permanent building committee, I see that is part of our responsibility. But we don't really have that um, authority. We have no authority, obviously. Um, but we need to have it better delineated by you as the select board as to what our responsibilities are moving forward for approved, identified, identified, approved projects and where we fit in with those, uh, those particular projects, particularly since we're talking about a very significant amount of money. Um, I do think that there is talent on the building committee, specifically as it regards to existing buildings, not necessarily new construction, but going forward and with the existing buildings in town. There is more than adequate talent on that committee to identify problems and to oversee the construction and repairs that are needed on those buildings. But at this point, we really don't have a clear directive from you as to where our responsibilities lie. Um, and I think we need that from you. I don't know if that answers your question, Mark, um, but I'm glad that you asked it because it's something I wanted to bring up to you that I think you need to make those decisions and they have to be very clear so that we can work well with the DPW and the facilities director and the progress of those, those projects. Or take a backseat and let the facilities director continue with the progress on those, those projects. You need to make those decisions.
I, I'm sorry.
I do think, I think, do think, um, having owned a construction business for a long period of time myself personally, having more than one set of eyes on any project is always a good idea. Because some people see things that others don't. A good, a good example would be very recently, um, because the pool was being opened over at Greenwood. Um, I went over and just kind of looked at that area and realized that there was an issue with the retaining wall again. Uh, brought that up at the building committee meeting and subsequently the architect went over and looked at it. Contractor, of course, said there was no issue, there is an issue. Um, and so I think that having different eyes on projects are always a good idea. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I'm glad you continued. Um, we covered some of what I wanted to ask. Um, so depending on what we give you as a directive, is there any, I know there's a couple vacancies on the committee, is there any hole you think needs to be filled? Uh, that somebody, a role or somebody with a certain kind of expertise you think would be good?
I think it would be helpful if we had a person that had some architectural experience. It would be very helpful if we had a person with some heating and air conditioning experience. Um, because clearly there are projects that fall within that $50,000 guideline um, where right now I see there is a void in that area. I do think very strongly that for you to appoint anyone to the permanent building committee without at least some breadth and depth of experience in construction is a mistake. I think we need to have people who have knowledge about, and it, you know, construction is a very complicated process. And, you know, whether you go new construction or used construction, you know, whether it's, um, you know, a brick framed building or a wood framed building, you've got different, and, and in our town, where we have buildings that are hundreds of years old versus buildings that are a year old. You know, you need to have breadth of experience.
Okay. I just, uh, comment that, uh, you know, your committee or your, you know, the, the board has sort of moved into spaces that were open. So like when you were working on the, the adult center, you realize like, okay, there's a lot of things here that aren't gonna be covered, aren't gonna be covered by the budget.
Right.
You know, you sort of said, okay, like, how, how is this gonna happen?
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, and that was your responsibility, but you kind of said, well, this has to happen. And I think the retaining wall is a good example.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so again, we can't ask you to have responsibility for anything that you guys don't have expertise for.
Correct.
And so, you know, we've been lucky that we have enough diversity in terms of expertise on that board, um, that you've been really a, a big help on a lot of these projects. And, um, but yeah, I mean, well, we can take a look at it. I'm sure the town manager has her ideas about, uh, you know, what would be the best ways for you guys to, to help the town in this area. And, uh, but we, we did our best to spell it out when we started the, the board, uh, you know, the planning, uh, the building committee. And, um, we can refine it. You know, maybe every few years, we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, I, I do, and what I said was not any criticism at all of what the initial directive was. But we are now moving into a different scenario for the building committee and for the town. So you need to better identify what our role is as it relates to existing construction in the town. And as it, you know, and going back to what, to what Mark said, you know, that initial instruction to us was to oversee in construction, vertical construction problems that exceeded the cost of $50,000, that also included schools. But I also recognize the MSBA has their own regulations. So, you know, that needs to be kind of spelled out to us also. Do we just take a backseat, which obviously would be fine? Um, but at this point, you now have on the building committee, people, all the members of that committee have experience in new construction of municipal buildings. And it, again, a second set of eyes never does any harm. So, um, you know, again, that, that just falls back into your court. Where, where, where do you see the role of the building committee?
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you as always. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks for coming on.
All right, uh, next up, resident comments. And seeing none, any select board comments?
I just have a couple of standard reports. I've attended a couple of meetings over the last couple of weeks for representing the select board of the Mass Municipal, um, the PVPC's, um, you know, municipal planning committee, they're still talking about streets and street schedules. And, you know, nothing's really moving forward in, in, in Long Meadow any faster than we thought. Walter Gunn technically is our voting member on the, on that committee. And so he's, he's looking at those things. But Route 5 renovation has not moved back up to where we hoped it was gonna be. It's still in 2025, so I think people will keep an eye on that one. Uh, the, there's been, uh, small actions at the Pioneer, uh, at Scannick Valley Health Consortium, uh, meetings. They've, uh, just going about their regular rate setting, which they've done for the year. And, and just the, just so we all know, uh, they're reporting that their finances, which took a very big hit in the fall of the last couple of months of 2021 calendar year. Uh, for people who don't know, the Scannick Valley Health Consortium is a bunch of towns that get together. We're essentially self-insured, although we have, the Scannick Valley buys, what they call is reinsurance for massive impacts. But, uh, you know, they, they actually had, I think it was three, but it might have been four individuals with very, very high medical bills that pulled down substantially their, their reserves. They've now seen those cases resolved, uh, mostly, I think, very positively. But the reserves are starting to come back up and they now are commenting. And I think I'd said this at the last meeting, the, the rates that they set for 20, fiscal 2023 looked a little iffy based on their reserves. They now are more comfortable with having set those rates for 2023. And I think the town should be in, in pretty good shape without looking to, you know, we, we pay half the money and the, our employees pay the other half of the money, but it still looks good. So the, you know, Scannick Valley does a great job of, of reviewing and, uh, their experience curves and their actual expenditures. So that's going forward. And finally, the PVTA had a meeting and there's just, there's standard stuff there. They've got some federal money and some state money, they're buying more electric buses. Uh, our service to Long Meadows remains limited, but we're actively engaged in maintaining the service that we have.
Justin?
Go ahead, Tom.
Just a comment, and, and this is something that actually came up earlier in, in this evening's meeting, is that there are situations where folks who are sitting here in the room can't really hear everything that's going on. And, uh, especially when we get a, a soft speaking person. Um, these mics are just for the, the television folks. It doesn't do much for people in the room. And so I've made this request before that we should have monitor speakers in here so that people in the room could hear everything that's going on. It's sad when you think, I, I can understand what's going on in the meeting better if I'm home than if I'm in the room. And I, and I just, I'm making a second request for that. And I know that at the, uh, this, this is something that came up at the adult center, um, adult council, uh, Council of Aging meeting. Uh, because even then, when people show up like myself on screen, um, people in the audience. people in the audience will have trouble hearing. So, you know, I I think we we want to have access for as well as much we can for people who may have not a hearing problem per se, but just would, I think even people with fairly good hearing can't hear everything that goes on in this room. I know that we do have some some adjustments, people can wear some earphones so they could hear what's coming through these microphones, but it's, you know, I I think a monitor speaker, even something as like this round thing right here that worked for folks would would be a big improvement, so that's it. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the town manager's report.
Thank you. So for our COVID-19 update, numbers as of June 3, 2022, we're tracking 110 cases statewide. The 14-day percent positivity rate's 8.44%. Long Meadows' rate is at 8.61%. This is the first week we've seen a decrease in percent positivity in several weeks, if not months. Greenwood pool schedule, we're continuing to struggle with the number of lifeguards who have accepted positions. 14 employment offers were made, only eight have accepted. This puts us in a tricky spot for trying to staff seven days a week. Parks and Rec Department staff have been working hard on a solution and have concluded that closing one day a week is the only option with the staff that we have. So the Greenwood Pool will open weekends only beginning on June 11, and then open full time the last day of school on June 17. The pool will be open six days a week, with Wednesday being the day that the pool remains closed. We're going to continue to try to recruit additional lifeguards, and should the staffing level increase, we will immediately revisit and implement a change to hopefully introduce seven-day-a-week coverage. Again, I know I've talked about this many times and over the last year or so, but this is a national issue, it's not just a Long Meadow issue. Corporate aquatic facilities are also struggling. We did increase wages 15%, which are covered by the Recreation Revolving Fund, they're not supported by the General Fund, to hopefully attract more candidates, but we're still struggling. Electric vehicle charging stations, we've received EV chargers for the DPW and the adult center. The one at the DPW has been installed, the two for the adult center are about to be installed and may have been by the time this was published. Those devices are not activated yet. We're working to set a policy to bring forward to the select board that will set the parameters for the charging. Once the policy's been adopted, then the chargers will be activated. We're still awaiting word on the grants that we've applied for for the high school and Wolf Swamp fields to install EV chargers there. And two announcements regarding upcoming fireworks. June 17, the Long Meadow Country Club's going to be holding an anniversary celebration with, or opening their anniversary celebration with a kickoff of the fireworks display. And on July 3, Twin Hills Country Club will host their annual fireworks display. Both of these are considered private events, but we do know that residents typically find spots throughout town to view the fireworks. They are in the process of completing their permits with the fire department, and both are expected to start around the same time, obviously different dates, right or right after dusk. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Go ahead.
Lynn, I, not from this report, but in prior times when we talked about electric vehicle car chargers, we were talking about them in the potentially at the library, and I know there were issues there, but we got a lot of comments from people that said, why is the town paying for people to charge their cars, for residents to go charge their cars? Why is the town paying electricity? Can you comment about that, because I know we had a discussion about that?
Sure, so we're not.
That, 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 that's good enough for me, but go ahead.
So, two things. One, we don't actually have any activated chargers right now, so nobody's paying for anything yet, and two, once those chargers are activated, users will have to swipe their card or their phone and pay for the electricity.
I I'd heard that answer from you before, but I think it's important for people to hear that again, because I know it will come up. Thank you.
The chargers were paid with grants, so Long Meadows not paying anything?
No, it's a combination of private funds or grants or donations.
Okay.
We did, we were, the DPW was paid for out of the DPW construction project. The adult center was paid for partially out of the adult center construction budget, but primarily through a donation from LACCf, and once those chargers are activated, we will hold a ribbon cutting for those ones specifically. Wolf Swamp and the adult center will be done through grants, and Wolf Swamp, hopefully, will have some construction funds left potentially that we could use.
Who will be, who is getting paid? Eversource, or is it a private company for, yeah?
Yeah, it would be the utility, Eversource.
Do we get a cut of that?
The way it will likely work, as we're developing the policy, is the the demand charges will cover the cost to maintain the system as well, so we have a separate data charge and maintenance agreement, so the cost to charge a vehicle will take that all into account.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And and the one at the DPW, will that be in the front parking lot?
It is.
It will be accessible?
Yes, it's a public access charging station.
Beautiful. Okay, thank you.
So the bigger question is, do these end up going on the national car charger grid?
Yes.
So they, so people who have electric cars, well, no, but people have electric cars, it'll pop up that these are?
Yes.
That's the key.
So those two, the both the DPW and the adult center are public access charging, so they have to be available for anybody to use, and the high school and Wolf Swamp will absolutely need to be that way, because part of the grant program that we applied for requires that they be public access, and they, their signs will be, signs will be posted in each of those parking spaces.
Great. Anything else? Onto old business, approval of the meeting minutes from May 2, 2022.
I'll move, we approve the meeting minutes from May 2, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, and what are the magic words here?
All those in favor.
All those in favor?
All in favor, yeah.
You'd think I would remember that. Different in this seat. All right, town manager evaluation. So the manager evaluations have been compiled here, so all of the four of us, everyone did an evaluation of Lynn, and they're all in this one document that are attached to the agenda, so anyone can look at them. On the whole, very, very positive, and so we've all, I'm very impressed with you, Lynn, so any motions on that front?
Yeah, I'm I'm going to make a motion, I'm just going to find the document here.
I think it's section 10.
Yeah, I know, but I'm looking to to read the exact document. Oh, here it is. Yeah, so I'm, I'd like to make a motion that we award the town manager a salary raise commensurate with or the same as the cost of living raise that will go to other non-union employees, which we understand, we've been told, is scheduled to be between 2.0 and 2.75%, so she'll get what that is, but also that we make an adjustment to section 10 titled vacation of of her contract, and I'm going to read the contract as modified and and talk about the modifications. It will say, "The town manager shall be granted five weeks paid vacation per contract year." That is a change from the four weeks that was in there, and it says, "A week shall be defined as five working days." It goes on to say, "Effective July 1, 2022, vacation shall accrue at a rate of 2.083 days per month, which is 25 days per 12 months. Throughout the length of this agreement, the vacation year shall run from July 1. Any use of unaccrued vacation days may be approved by the select board in advance. The town manager shall be allowed to carry over up to five days of vacation from one fiscal year to the next. Carryover of more than five days vacation may be authorized by a vote of the select board, but must be the result of extraordinary circumstances. Town manager shall report her use of vacation to the Human Resources Department. When used, then the town manager shall report in writing to the select board vacation days used each year. Any accrued but unused vacation days in excess of the five carryover days shall be forfeited at the end of the fiscal year. Vacation days are subject to buyback upon separation of employment." So that's my my motion.
I'll second the motion.
I'd like to speak to the motion if I could, sure, please.
I I just want to comment that this decision to award Lynn an additional vacation week was based on input from Lynn that suggested that that would be of of value to her as a contract modification, and we thought that that would be appropriate. It, you know, it seemed seemed appropriate to do that, and in lieu of more and more and more money, what we're doing is putting her in the same pool as the rest of the the employees. We understand this is a a difficult year, and we're trying to keep to the the overall cost of living increase that all of our non-union salary employees will be given. We consulted with our HR director, Erica Jelineus, who indicated to us what that range was going to be as we move forward toward the, you know, final determination this year, and so it's based on that that we made this change, switching from four to five weeks. We cleaned up the wording a little bit, took out some transitionary words that were in there at the at the start of the contract, and also, I just might add, put in a comment that said, "Carryover by more than five days vacation may be authorized by the select board," and we did that because when we wrote this contract originally in 2019, we had no idea that COVID-19 was going to come around, and what we found out last year was, sometimes the town manager just has to be here and can't use all of the vacation days, and we didn't want to get into position where she had to use it or lose it, or, you know, be in a position that she was going to take vacation when it wasn't appropriate to do so. So that comment, Lynn, is intended to, hopefully, we'll never need it again, but but, you know, address the issue that we found, that we did have to address in 2020, so I hope you found that, find this to be acceptable, and that's my comment.
Well, just, you know, we'd like to keep you, we hope you'll stay around, you, we know how hard you work. Every time I go in the office, you're always in a meeting, it seems, so it's really important, and, you know, it's nice to see that my colleagues, the other members of the board, also are seeing that you're doing a great job, and, you know, everyone I talk to about your work has positive stuff to say, and so thank you for another good year, and look forward to many, many more.
Thank you.
A good town manager's hard to find, so we're lucky.
Thank you, if I may. Thank you, I really greatly appreciate it. Partly why I'm doing so well, I feel, is because of the relationship that I have with the select board. I think it's a two-way street, and we're making it work because of that working relationship we have, but I could not accept these kind words without acknowledging the incredible hardworking staff that makes up the town of Long Meadow. The great words you have to say about me are only possible because some of the people are here in this room tonight, but certainly all the department heads and all the staff, and obviously, Mike in my office makes it all come together for me, so I really appreciate the nice words you have to say, and it's a huge credit to the people that stand behind me, too.
So just as a follow-up, I, this this edit of of section 10 of the contract, I've forwarded to Michael, and and hopefully, we can get this to, I assume it's Gordon, or somebody in our our HR legal team, who will write it up legally and appropriately and get you to sign it, and I guess whether it's Steve or the next chair of the board, or whoever it is, but we want to get this up and going as quickly as possible. So far, we haven't voted on it, though.
All those in favor?
Tom?
Fine.
Sorry.
Bad timing, okay.
Thank you.
I I just want to comment, if I could, Josh, that that this, we discussed this in an executive session, and in executive session, Steve Morantz was there, he unfortunately had to leave because of a personal issue, but but this is, you know, I I don't want to give the impression that people in town, it's the G3 people in select board just acted. It was it was a unanimous decision on the part of the select board. The fact is, we cannot vote on the things like this in executive session, we can discuss them and debate whether what we want to do to the contract, but votes have to take place in in open session, but Steve wasn't in favor, I know I'm not putting words in his mouth to to say that, and I think people should understand that.
That's a good point, thank you for bringing that up, Mark. Moving on to the Eversource Western Mass Natural Gas Pipeline update. We have been told that Eversource has filed with MEPA, which is the Mass Environmental Protection Agency, maybe, and they also filed with the Energy Facilities Siting Board, and there are two very similar filings, and we've been working with our legal counsel to determine our the best route forward, and there is, there will be an opportunity to, right now, reply to MEPA, and we're trying to find out exactly when that should be done and when the deadline for that will be. It may be this month, and we're going to ask for a bit more time to do that, and so that will, residents of the town who want to speak on the gas pipeline will be able to do so, and the filing is a public document, you can see what it says and see what Eversource, their justification for the pipeline is and their proposed route, so we'll have an opportunity to to give comment to MEPA, and the town will also have an opportunity to respond. And then the Energy Facility Siting Board, that seems to be, processes out a bit, when we will respond, from what I understand, and none of us are experts on this part of how it will go, but that that board takes a bit longer before the comment is, we're able to give comment, at least for the town, and whether residents will be able to do that is another question that we'll have to update everyone on. In the meantime, MEPA will be doing a site visit in town, we're told, and we are hoping to find out exactly when that will be and whether the town will be invited to present to MEPA or to give input at that time. We're told the date may be May 2, I'm sorry, June 21, but we're not sure that that is the case, we'd have to get that directly from MEPA to our council. So that's that's our current update. As always, we, executive sessions, when we discuss how things are going, and we may not be able to give all the information, but I wanted to, this is on the agenda, because the select board wanted to make sure that the town residents are aware of what's going on, things are now moving, Eversource has done their filings, so it's in further progress than it has been up to date. We knew where they were going to do it, pushing back when they're going to do it, and now Eversource has actually done that filing, which starts the process of them trying to pick a site for the pipeline in place. Tom or Mark, anything I missed there?
No.
Okay. And now we'll move on to setting the fiscal year '23 water, sewer, and stormwater rates.
Josh, can I suggest we take these one at a times, water, then storm, then sewer, and then stormwater?
Sure, so.
But can I just, I wonder if we could just move the fire chief up, because he's here, and wouldn't have stayed here as long? If we could move, change the agenda, just to?
For the new business, sure.
Just to?
We got, we got, we got a lot of people, okay. We got a whole bunch of people here, Tom.
A whole bunch of folks. Well, I appreciate it. Well, I can only try, I can only ask.
Why don't we tackle them as as are coming up on the agenda, then?
All right.
See what we can do here. So we already, we met on the water rates, so now we're just voting, correct?
Yes.
Well, we, this same information was introduced to us recently, right?
On our last meeting.
Start with the water.
Right.
Yeah.
Josh, I'll I'll make a motion that we adjust the water rates effective July 1, 2022, that is for fiscal year '23, to be a water rate of $3 and $0.00 feet of water. That's an increase of 2.51% over the prior year's water rate.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One is that, as you know, I go through the water rates pretty clearly. I think people need to understand that that this, we buy our water from the city of Springfield, Springfield Water Water Department. The rate that they have charged us, they will be charging us next year, has gone up 11.1%. We're raising our rates 2.5%. So part of that is we can mitigate that because of some of the other things we do, but people need to understand that water is getting more and more expensive. When you look at the water rates around municipalities in Western Massachusetts, or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are amongst the lowest. Lowest costs of water. I'm not suggesting we're going to increase the water rates, but I think people need to appreciate that our water rates are reasonable here and well under control. And so part of this is, is because we do a good job, we're under a lot of pressure, as people who follow our town meeting know, to try to even reduce our water usage more. But very frankly, if we cut our water use in half, our water rates would probably go up 80%, because we pay by the volume. We have a certain amount we have to raise. So I wanted to make that comment. The second comment I wanted to make was that once again, our motion for, or proposed rates for fiscal 2023, do not change the fixed rate portion, fixed fee portion of your rate. That is the meter charge. So everybody who pays for water in this town gets two charges, a meter charge and a usage charge. And the meter charge is intended to help cover the cost of the capital investments that we put in, when we put in new pipes and valves and all that other stuff for supplying water. We have not changed that fixed rate in, ever, I think, in five years or six years. And although I looked at doing it, you know, when I started adjusting it, you know, it's right now $15.60, I believe, for a residential home. And although it doesn't seem, you know, meaningful to make a change this year, I certainly believe that in the coming year, we're going to want to move that up a little bit, because our cost of borrowing, our cost of capital, and the amount of water projects we're doing is, is going to be increasing. And so we're likely to do that in the coming years, but not this year. Finally, I think I need to comment on the other thing that I saw when I went through the water. Because every year, the way we run, we set water rates, is we calculate how much it's going to cost us to run the water department, which is, to some degree, an estimate of how many people there are in the DPW, and what percentage of them work in the water department, this, that, and the other thing. But when it comes right down to it, we're saying it's $2.94 million to run the water department next year. So the next step is to divide it by how much water we're going to sell. And if anybody here knows how much water we're going to sell, please let me know, because it's for next year. We don't, you know, if it's a dry year, we'll sell more water, because people will water their lawn. So what year will sell less water? And so we always look at that number, and we have a policy of looking at, it's called a three-year running average of how much water we've sold in the last three years. Well, the DPW reports to us water that they buy from the city of Springfield, not the water we sell to our residents. And so when I looked at this number, it, it looked very low. And I talked to Jennifer Layden, and she said, "No, that's the number the DPW reported." And in fact, we're using 799,000 units, which each unit, again, is 100 cubic feet. The problem is, we buy about 900,000 units. So this past year, if we believe what we read, that, that there's been about a 15% or 20% difference between the water we buy and the water we sell. Now, I'm looking at the fire chief, because I know this year, we had a couple of major fires that's unmeasured water. And there's absolutely no way of knowing how much water that was. But, but, you know, what, part of this is, what I'd like to do is, we've got a new DPW Director, we're going to be doing some more work, you know, we, we need to get a handle on that, whether it's fire hydrants, flushing, or major fires, you know, we can always estimate. Look, we had a four-inch pipeline with so much pressure, and it was going for three hours, or eight hours, whatever it is, we can estimate what water, we've got a lot of losses somewhere, I think. And I'd like to suggest, as part of this, that we go out and we find the 15% missing water, you know, that we're buying, that we're not reselling. Because if we can sell everything we buy, you know, we can obviously lower the rates. And, and what that means is that, at some point in the coming year, the DPW ought to take a look at the water we buy versus the water we sell.
How much would Greenwood Pool get?
Not that much.
Okay.
Well, we did have that one...
It's all in, it's all in, Mary Beth, the schools get a metered number. Now, whether they pay it or not is a different, different issue. But, you know, the schools get a metered number. So we, you know, and, and we look at the meters. And so, I only make that comment because it's, it seems to be very, very large, and it seems to be growing in the last couple of years, the losses. I don't know if that means we've got water leaks, or if it just means that we're not doing as good a job of accounting for hydrant flushing and, and the like. But it sure would be nice to know where that 15% of the water went. Normal is somewhere between 2% and 4%. I mean, that's kind of what, you know, most municipalities expect. So we're way above that. Anyway, that, those are my comments about the water system.
Yeah. Well, we did have that situation where the billing was off on that one housing area. But we caught, we saw, we caught that.
But the billing, but the metering wasn't off, the billing was...
The meeting was off, the billing was off.
Right.
Anything further? No? All those in favor?
All right.
All right, and then move on to the sewer rate.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we set the sewer rate at $2.75 per 100 cubic feet of water used, with a cap at 200 units of water usage. So that you do not get charged for sewer after the first 200 units of water. That's an increase of 1.85% from the prior year's rate.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on that?
Again, my only comment, Josh, would be that our sewer rates are pretty reasonable. We're setting the sewer rates now, based on water usage, but we anticipate that sometime through this, middle of this year, we'll be switching over to our new agreed-upon winter average method. People can readily expect that the rate will increase significantly. We set sewer rates like we set water rates. We've determined that it costs us $1.92 million to run the sewer department. And we will sell, if you will, 698,000 units of sewage. So that comes up to a sewer rate of $2.75. Once we come to winter averaging, the sale of sewer units will likely drop from 698,000 units, somewhere around 400,000 units, maybe a little bit below that. As you can tell, that will cause the rate to rise significantly. For people who won't, anymore be paying for irrigation water, they'll save money. For people who are small users, who just, you know, use 10 or 15 or 20 units of water a year, they're going to find their sewer rates are going to go up by 60% or so. And that will more properly reflect the actual cost of sewer. And although we don't like raising rates on anybody, I think having it be accurate and reflect what the true cost of our sewage is, what really goes to Bondi's Island, will be meaningful. Again, we pay $1.92 million to our sewer department, and we say we sell or use 698,000 units of sewage. We actually only send about 400,000 units to Bondi's Island. The rest of it goes down through people's lawns when they water their lawn. So I think people need to understand that this $2.75 rate is an interim rate until we get the winter averaging going, and it's going to go up.
And that sewer rate increase will bring us in line with more surrounding communities. That's closer.
That's, well, yeah. I mean, most communities...
We were much lower.
Have, have much higher rates, correct?
Tom?
No comments?
I just think people need to understand it.
He made a motion, we'll second it.
All that in favor? Are all those in favor? And finally, our stormwater rate proposal.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we, I'm going to make a motion that we approve our, a stormwater rate, to change our stormwater rate to $76.93 per equivalent residential unit, that we call that an ERU. That's an increase of 15% from our prior year's ERU of $66 per ERU. The reason for an increase at that, what some would say is a high level, is that the Select Board had voted four years ago, I believe, when we set up the stormwater utility, that we would slowly, over a period of eight or 10 years, phase in the amount of actual stormwater charges from the DPW that get charged to this utility. So every year, we're bringing more and more of our DPW charges that are associated with stormwater into the stormwater utility budget. This year, it is not yet there. We have three or four more years till we finish off bringing out, bringing in 100%. But this better reflects the actual cost. It helps us set funds and for, and bonding for things that have to do with both utilities and for some of the federal EPA requirements for stormwater management. So that's the reason for the ERU increase to $76.93.
Okay. I'll second the motion. And because the federal mandated, you know, bills that affect clean water, you know, the town has to compel, you know, we're compelled to make these changes. And so we're half the way there. It'd be nice to think in four years from now, we'll have covered all the stormwater costs that the, these mandates have, have pushed on the town. And then at that point, hopefully there won't be any legislation that will need us to keep going up on this. So...
I'll hold our breath on that.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Town of Long Meadow and LCTV Operating Agreement Update.
We'll try to buzz through this as quickly as possible. I think you know that I've been working with the LCTV Board of Directors, the Town's Cable License Attorney, and the Select Board Chair to make headway on the operating agreement. I met with the group on the 24th. We've got a couple sticking points right now that I'm bringing back to you. Let's see, the funding, most of it's related to funding. So Section 8, regarding operational funding, LCTV would like a percent amount in the agreement guaranteed, as opposed to coming to the Select Board annually to figure out what that amount would be. They would like, for budgeting purposes, a guaranteed amount of funding each year. And that carries through, through Section 9, which relates to capital equipment. And so they're at their, that's where we're stuck right now. The current agreement just talks about that the Select Board shall annually, you know, no later than, I think it's July or August 1 of each year, set an amount for the purposes set forth for capital equipment or for PEG access funding. So the LCTV Board's asking for an actual dollar amount, actually equivalent to what the license agreement is.
Do they have a proposed amount, or are we bidding against ourselves here?
Well, the proposed amount is what the LC, with the cable license agreement is. So it's the way it's always been, but minus an operating agreement.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
So I'm just going to reiterate what you said. So what they're looking for is a, a statement in here that would have the town turn over to LCTV, the revenue that we get from Comcast, as, as, from the operating agreement.
Which is what we do now, right?
Which is what we do without an operating agreement. And so the question is, you know, if we're, you know, trying to be better overseers of LCTV, if that's what, part of what we're doing, where does that fit relative to a budget? In other words, you know, is this a, just give us all the money, we'll figure out, and I'm saying that colloquially, I don't mean it derogatorily, but, you know, what we're... spent, or, you know, what, what I saw here in Section 8 is, the Select Board shall provide operational funding on a calendar quarterly basis. Would seem to me that they ought to be having a, an annual budget. And then that budget, we could do it once, I don't want to be setting a, I don't want necessarily have input to their budget, but, you know, their budget ought to have, here's what it's costing us to operate, and here's the gap, and the gap's got to be filled by revenue coming from the cable, cable agreement with Comcast, you know, that $8 and whatever cents we bring in per person. And, and if, once we say that, see that, and if that's their budget, you know, I don't have a problem with saying, "Based on your budget, here's how much it's going to be, and we're going to provide it to you quarterly for the next three, four quarters." So from my perspective, it ought to be based on a budget, and not just... But rather, it's, here's, here's what they, they need to operate, and we do it once a year. I wouldn't even need to take a, personally, a quarterly vote, but others say, "They set an annual budget. We think we know what the annual revenue is. We'll pay them quarterly, because that's how we get paid from Comcast." But, but, you know, that would be my approach to this.
So Lynn, now, do we get a yearly summary of all their expenses and what stuff is paid on?
No.
So we just transfer the money that we get?
Prior to this last license agreement, the payment was made directly to LCTV.
We didn't see the money.
So basically, what you're putting here is, we'll, they'll get X percentage, provided we approve of their budget, or at least see their budget. Would that fly?
Yeah, I think we could craft language that would meet that.
But Josh, X percentage of what? Of what they asked for, or what we got? Or should it be, instead of, what they, I think what they're asking is, instead of saying X percentage, we will give you X dollars for the coming year. I mean, we, we...
We don't know what the dollar amount is on a given year, though, right?
We don't know until we get the bill. Comcast says, "We lost 85 subscribers. Your, your check went down so many dollars." I mean...
So there's, there's three buckets of money. There's the subscriber access, which is 50 cent per subscriber, which is, like, it doesn't amount to very much. And then there's the capital funding, and then there's the actual license itself, which is $40,000 a year. So that one's static. We know what that is. It's the other buckets that are a little bit, you know, different each time.
Right. So capital expenses, there should be a plan about, you know, what, what expenditures are needed now, what they're saving for, for future expenditures. And, and we don't get anything like that. I get this point.
Correct, correct.
Well, if we're giving them all the money, I'm okay with memorializing that, but I do think it is reasonable to ask for, at least a review or an input on how they're spending it.
Well, the last meeting, we, we agreed that we were going to have the right to put somebody on their board.
Yeah.
So that's, we can move on to that conversation, if you'd like.
Well, why don't we just sort through, through this? I mean, do we, you know, where are we in terms of, is it a dollar amount or a percentage amount? Is it, and, I mean, you're right, because we can't tell them, "We promise you, you know, $95,000 a quarter." If we're only getting a check from Comcast for $85,000 that quarter, you know, I mean, that, that makes it pretty tough. On the other hand, are we going to promise them, "You get 100% of what Comcast sends us?" Which means, even if they don't need it, we'll send them the 100%, all the money, even though their budget said they only needed $85,000? If a check came from $95,000, then we send them the whole 95, because we said 100%? That's why it really needs to be up to, or, you know, send us a budget, we'll do that, up to the 100% of what we get from Comcast, because we're not going to give them more than we already get from Comcast. Right?
Right. So we could craft language, I mean, their suggestion is, an amount no less than the amount provided for this purpose by Comcast pursuant to the franchise requirement, but we could say, "Subject to presentation or approval of this, annual approval of the Select Board."
Subject to, more importantly, subject to their annual budget. I mean, not just the pre, but I assume their Board of Directors wants them to prepare an annual budget, right?
Yeah.
So prepare an annual budget. If their annual budget is, you know, X dollars quarterly, then, then that language works for me, Lynn.
Okay.
Right?
And so we're not really held accountable either. So when our audit committee...
It's not our money.
It's not our money. They have nothing to do with us. So...
Nothing to do with the town.
So then...
It's a separate 501(c)(3).
Yeah. So are we, do we have relationships with other 501(c)(3)'s that we get their budget? No?
So, so, let me, it is our money, because we are the only, we're the issuing authority. We're the only ones that can license cable.
Okay.
So it is our money.
It is, okay.
So if their budget is less than what we get from Comcast, theoretically, that's our money to keep?
That would be up to the Select Board. There's very specific uses for those funds, but you would be able to apply those funds to something within those pots of money, or eligibility criteria. The way it had worked before is, the checks just went directly to LCTV, without any, say, or any... or any agreement between the town and LCTV for those funds.
Right. Okay.
So, in, I think, to your questioning about a 501(c)(3), there's very few that, there shouldn't be any, I should say, that we, that use town funds for, without an agreement, a contract, an invoice, something authorized to make that payment.
All right. And, and have you looked into what other towns are doing?
Yes.
Regarding to this?
Yes.
It's okay, so, thank you for your work on this agreement, and...
So there's a few other areas in here that are for debate. So we've talked about the funding.
The Board of Directors and the lease.
So the Board of Directors, they are, there's agreement if it's a liaison to the meetings. So not a voting member, a liaison. I told them I would bring that back to you, I thought that that might be okay, 'cause I'm not sure that your intent was to actually have a voting member on there, 'cause they would need to amend their articles of organization.
I'm, I'm okay with that, because we had, we put it at our sole discretion, we weren't sure if we were gonna do anything anyway. And if they're going to send a budget to us, then I think that gives us more oversight than having someone on the board.
Hey, I voted against it, so I'm, I'm fine for having it be.
You okay with that, Tom?
A liaison.
Yeah, I, I think we should, we could appoint someone, just sort of, to know what's going on, because it's, you know, it's important, but we don't want, it's, we wouldn't be having this meeting on TV if, if things went wrong there, so it's nice to have someone there.
Sure.
It is very similar to the agreement with the library, you do have.
Okay.
A liaison, or I think it might even be the town manager could attend as a liaison, or might be a Select Board member, one or the other, but there is language that's very similar in that agreement.
All right.
And then, there is discussion about if, for some reason, LCTV were to dissolve, the ownership of the equipment. So what we had in the language was that it would revert to the town, it'd be the town's equipment. They would like to keep it. If it's a, if LCTV is dissolved by deliberate action of the Board, or if the Select Board terminates the agreement, they would like all the equipment to maintain, through the nonprofit.
I don't understand that.
It's a public access TV system.
If they, no, but if they cease to exist, who is there to retain it?
The public, which is us.
What does that mean? It sits in a storeroom somewhere, and I need a camera, I can go get one, Tom?
I think it would be disposed of like any other property part of the nonprofit.
So, so part of the dissolution of the nonprofit, it'd be, they can, they can sell off the equipment that they bought with town's money? Comcast's money that we allocated to them?
Well, it was allocated to the public, it's public access, and so I would think all the equipment belongs to the public, meaning, you know, the town would have some say over it, and, and I, I mean, I, you know, I don't see where, how they just walk off of that again, 'cause it just starts from scratch.
Well, generally, a 501(c)(3)'s, if they have assets and they dissolve, it has to go another 501(c)(3). I don't, do we have a different, is there a different, since this is a town asset, I wonder if it's any different, but...
It's not a town asset.
It's a... It's paid for by the town, I don't, yeah.
So, so the language that we had presented was, any such successor PEG access organizations shall assume all of the benefits and obligations. An equipment owned by LCTV and/or the town, having been purchased with funds provided pursuant to this agreement, shall become the property of the town and/or transferred to such successor organization as directed by the issuing authority, which is gonna change the Select Board.
So it seems to me, Lynn, that, that it's in the best interests of the town of Long Meadow, i.e., to have a, a public access television system in the twenty-first century and going forward. And if for some reason, LCTV as an entity doesn't exist, I think the town would wanna create a successor to it. And in order to do that, we need that equipment. I mean, we're not gonna go out and buy, you know, all that equipment. So I can't, first of all, I, like I said, I hope we're arguing over nonsense here, that they're not gonna go, go belly up, but goofier things have happened. But I certainly would think that the, we ought to have that equipment available, because the town would wanna create a successor organization, even if it was a department within the town, but hopefully, we get somebody to create a separate 501, a new 501(c)(3). It's my take.
Okay.
I don't know what, Tom...
Yeah, I, I agree, you know, it's, it's, definitely, it's an asset to have this public access television, and it would be very expensive, maybe cost prohibited, you know, for us to start something if they disappeared, but, you know, like what Mark says, you know, if it ever disappeared, I mean, the people making this, this decision are gonna be long gone. It's gonna be a long, long time from now, I can't see, I've never heard of any of these failing, you know, something like this.
I've been part of a 501(c)(3) that's failed.
No, but I mean, LCTV, TV thing, I mean...
It can be as, and I shouldn't say, it can be as, as, you know, unusual, as just bad management for a couple of years, where, you know, they, they just don't run things, and I hope that's not gonna happen, but, but, you know, remember, they're, they have very limited sources of revenue. And, you know, if their expenses went off through the ceiling, they might find that their Board of Directors wants to dissolve. And if they do, we wanna create something in their place. Maybe that's, in my mind, maybe that causes enough to keep them from doing, you know, bad management, I don't know.
Okay. And then lastly, the, the reference to a lease will be removed, because they are in school property, so that would be a lease that they would need to enter into with the school committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we'll pay Lynn.
We'll continue our conversation, and then I'll bring, hopefully bring you back a final agreement.
Okay. Onto new business, one-day liquor licenses. Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund for an art show opening on June ninth.
There should be two there, actually.
Oh.
June ninth and another...
June twenty-second.
Yep.
International dinner.
Okay, so moved for a one-day liquor license for that date. Is there a rainy day? No, inside.
Another five.
Okay.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second it for the purposes of the discussion.
Go ahead, Mark.
I think we're, it, it's very difficult to talk about one of these applications without the other, in my opinion, and we've got, actually...
Three.
Three, yeah, well, I'm gonna take the two, Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund is one, and the other, because we're moving toward a, a situation where we brought something upon ourselves that we may be difficult dealing with, and I'll get into more, but we've got a public building that we're using for fundraisers, or not, or even for public documents, or for public, you know, or private meetings, that we're selling liquor in. And we have, in the past, done this, I think there needed, I said this the last time, there needs to be some constraints or limitations to this, and I think one of the issues we're gonna come up with is, you know, how do you say yes to some and no to others without, without a policy? And very frankly, we're talking about the Adults Community Center Fund ones, which are much easier to say yes to than a private application for a, for a liquor license where there are gonna be minors in a, in a public building. And I, you know, I, I looked at that, had a lot of concerns about it, and so I, I'm really torn between how to handle these things. I, I just don't know, I think we've gotten these out of hand. One of the things I asked is, are these fundraisers, and we'll go back to the Adult Community Center, are these fundraisers, are these town programs? And when I asked that, I was told, well, kind of, and, and kind of doesn't make it. Either they're town programs, and the applicant, application should be through the adult center, and Jim's here, where they're not town programs, and then the application is if they were any other private organization applying for a liquor license. And we, you know, right now, the way it sits for me is, it's not a town program. It is a, Long Meadow Adult Community Center Fund wants to use the adult center and have a, an art show, and therefore, they're asking us for a, and they're, they're having an art show, and then they're having a, an international dinner, and they wanted us to approve liquor licenses there. To me, that's a, a concern. And I said it the last time, and I'll repeat it.
Josh?
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so, when I look at these, as a board member, my first reaction is that if there was some, some difficulty, we hear it from the town manager, who is our professional, who was, who we, as a board, we count on the town manager to tell us if there's a problematic pattern that's happening. And I'm not hearing that. Or the director of the adult center, and I'm not hearing anything from them either. So I'm in full support of this until such a time that I'm convinced that it's problematic, and I'm not convinced yet.
I think my, my issue is, we, we have talked about this a number of times, and we haven't come up with a policy, and we need to. And until such time, it's difficult to say no to things. And we've been saying yes to all of these Community Center Fund events, and they are quasi, it does seem like they're quasi-town events, I'm sure people think of them that way to a certain extent. So, I do, but I have different feelings about the party, so I think we can, we can address them. I agree with you, Mark, they are hand in hand to a certain extent, but we, they're presented here separately, I think we should address them separately. So, any further discussion on the commu, adult fund, I'm sorry, the June nine...
The art show.
The art show on June ninth, and the international dinner on June twenty-second?
Oh, okay, well, it's, okay, as long as we know the motion is for both of these events.
Yes.
Okay, and I...
All right.
If we need any amending that needs to be made to include both, but, we have no further discussion.
The, the motion, yeah.
Tom made the motion to be getting, and then we discussed.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have any, I don't know that I'm gonna say is new, other than, you know, it's just gotten to the point where this is a, I, I haven't, Tom, I hear your, your comment, we haven't heard of concerns or complaints. You know, the issue is, for me, should the town's resources, the town's buildings, be used for private fundraising with liquor being served?
Well, I think, you know, I guess that's, you know, we look at, there's so many fundraisers going on in town buildings, and on fields, and everywhere else in town, that, that I just, I, we, you know, you're, you're opening up a pretty big Pandora's Box.
You bet.
Because, you know, you look at all the fundraising that goes on for lacrosse teams, and football teams, and wrestling teams, and, and, you know, you're gonna say, they're using town property, town facilities, I, so I, you know, I just can't, I don't buy it at this point. I mean, we, I'm, I'm not avoiding of discussing it, but I don't think we can make a decision on these, on this motion tonight, you know. If, if that's something we're gonna, we decide to look into as a board, I, I'm not gonna shy away from it, I don't have a problem looking at it, but it's gonna affect a lot of different fundraising events in town, and, and you can't, you can't single out one specific group, or one specific building, you know, you gotta...
Just remember, my, my objection isn't a fundraiser. You know, we've done that forever.
Yes.
My objection is liquor license.
Right.
You know, do we wanna continue to set, have, allow town buildings to, people who are using town buildings to get one-day liquor licenses? You know, is the fifty dollars, or seventy-five dollars, or whatever the fee is, you know, worth it to the town based on the potential liability coming along because liquor's being served in a town building? 'Cause don't, don't kid ourselves, if there's ever a problem, they're looking for the deep pockets, and the deep pockets aren't the LACCF, or, you know, or somebody who's got a, you know, Safe Serve card, who's the caterer. The deep pockets are gonna be the town, so just remember that.
And there's always people who are gonna try to sue the town regardless.
It only takes once.
They could sue, us, all the people who work for the town, they could sue us.
But, but not if we don't allow, wait a second, but not if we don't allow liquor in town buildings.
Well, there's, I, you know, I don't know...
I mean, they could sue, they could sue us 'cause they follow trips in the town building.
I don't wanna turn this idea into an open debate either, here. I think we're voting on a motion as a board, and, you know, we should just vote on it.
I, I think we need to have, like, if you could note down that we're going to have a discuss, policy discussion on, on this, at a future meeting, and recognize Mary Beth.
I just feel the need to clarify the applications and the position of LACCF, and the director is here, so he can certainly verify this. These are not fundraisers, we don't raise money for LACCF. This is really as a courtesy to the Council on Aging, to sponsor events that would be of interest to the community at large, if they're in the evening, and if they're during the day, for specifically the senior residents. Now, in this particular case, the art shows have been held for, I don't know, three or four months now. Typically, what happens is people kind of come in, they look at the artwork that's on display, all of those pieces of arts thus far have been by local artists, there's a little chat, they may or may not have a glass of wine and some cheese and crackers, and they leave. They don't stay for the full amount of time that the art show is being held. It's a typical art show that all of us have, have gone to. It's a benefit to the community, and it is a benefit to the local artists, so it's sort of a cultural event. There's no charge for it, we don't ask people to pay anything for it, that's that particular event. If I go to the international dinners, the transition team a number of years ago presented a document to you to open, to have a more warm and welcoming community for minority people. And so, taking that in mind, and if you go to the adult center, you will see that the artwork that was purchased and donated to the Long Meadow, to the town of Long Meadow, took that into consideration, and much of the artwork that is there, especially that on the first floor, was done by minority artists. We kept that, LACCF kept that in mind in making the international dinners. So our hope is, every couple of months, we will sponsor, together with the Council on Aging, an international dinner. In April, we held, had an Indian night, it was very successful, we filled it, we had entertainment, there was music, there was Indian food, et cetera, yes, people did have a glass of wine, and they might have had, piece of cheese and some crackers, and then they enjoyed dinner. The cost that they paid for a ticket only covered the food, LACCF just donated the wine and cheese, and paid for any other expenses having to do with the event. In addition to that, we actually ended up supporting financially the cost of the food. The same thing will probably happen with the Italian night. Our hope is, moving forward, that we will have perhaps Puerto Rican food, Cajun food, Irish food, German food, we just literally want to follow what the recommendations were of the transition team, to try to provide a warm and welcoming environment to the full Democrat, demographics in our town, which would include Vietnamese food, et cetera. So that's, that's the thought process behind this. People do pay for a ticket, the ticket only covers the cost of the food, we raised no money for it, in fact, it costs the nonprofit money to support these events. I just wanted to make that clear. Now, I know you have other liquor license applications in front of you tonight, and perhaps you will have in the future. I just wanna explain what, I work closely with the Council on Aging in planning these events, certainly take all of their recommendations, and, you know, we help put the event together... Certainly take all of their recommendations and, you know, we help put the event together. We work at the event, as well as somebody from the staff is generally there. That's the concept between these two events. And moving forward, we probably will be doing these events again in the future. So that's pretty much it.
Josh. Mary Beth, if I could.
Yeah.
The relationship between the LACCf and the staff is something I absolutely don't understand. You know, if, if this is a program for the adult center, why isn't the adult center staff doing it? And in fact, my concern is that because they're not doing it, it's not an adult center program. It's an LACCf program. And, you know, the gray space between that is something I can't come to grips with. You know, I, I mean, at the art show, no art is purchased?
At the art shows, art has been purchased, yes.
Right, so, and, and the money that, that is raised, is that money go to the artist or to the LACCf?
My understanding is that it's gone to the artist, correct, Jim? Yes.
So I, I mean, I, I just, that's my disconnect here is that it's, you know, if we want to continue these, you know, and I know this isn't what we got here for. It's my opinion that the staff and the, and the adult center needs to say, these are great programs. We want to do these, these meal pro, and then put together a volunteer committee, whatever they do, but it's under the auspices of the adult center. And then the adult center staff comes to us and says, it's really be great for us to serve wine and cheese or whatever it is and do that. But the fact that you're doing it through, through this nonprofit really says to me that, that it's an arm's length from the, from the adult center programming. And if that's not the case, then it gets very, very easy for us to say, it's an adult center program. There's nobody under the age of 21 there. They want to do it, you know, and, and then, you know, you can put together any kind of committee he wants to. But this, these haven't been coming from Jim Leighton. They haven't been coming from, and, and to me, that's, that's a big difference. Very frankly, if it came from Jim Leighton, we'd probably waive the liquor license fee too. But that's a different story. That's just my, my take on this. And, and we've got to decide, you know, if, if their staff's not, you know, not, doesn't have the resources to say, we can't really support these monthly. My question is how can you do it monthly and they can't do it month, or do it twice a month and they can't do it twice?
Because we, because of the generosity of the community, we were able to raise quite a bit of money and continue to raise money to support the adult center.
But, but, but as you know, you know, the money's only 10% of what it takes to put this thing on. The other 90% is the effort of organizing it and calling the caterers and calling the people, all that kind of stuff, right? And that's.
And that's done mutually, actually, you know? I mean, they, they take care of some of it and I don't think I've, I haven't, I'm sorry, this one, this one, I did contact the caterer because I knew the caterer.
I, I, you just, I hope you're just trying, I'm just trying to convey my confusion between whether this is a, a, a private, nonprofit, but private group doing it, or if it's the adult center's department doing it. And it's clearly, from what I see, it doesn't appear to be the adult center department doing it. That's all. That's my, that's where I am.
I think we're getting pretty far afield.
Right.
So any further, Tom? All those in favor?
Can't forget that.
All right, we have another one day liquor license application for Laura Pizzuto for a graduation party on May, sorry, June 18th, the Long Meadow Adult Center.
Yes, I'll move that we approve this one day liquor license for June 18th at the Long Meadow Adult Center.
And I'll second for discussion purposes. I will, as I mentioned before, I, this to me is a different animal. For one, that we have underage people. I presume this is, I don't know if this is a college graduation or a high school graduation, but just the fact that we have people under 21 in attendance gives me pause. And also, there's a DJ for, 40 people seems surprising to me. This just seems like a different, not what I expect the Long Meadow Adult Center to be used for. It's a very different type of event. I wonder if the rest of the board has any input on it.
I don't know if I have input, but for the first time ever, I got an email and I'm gonna read it. I got it June 4th, was that Saturday or something like that? From a resident, and I won't share the email if people want to, but it's, I won't share the name now. Just reading the agenda for 6/6 and a little concerned about granting a license for a graduation party at the adult center. There will be people under 21 at this event and I really wonder how the drinking age will be enforced. The event will be catered and the caterer will supply a bartender. Four hours of celebration with folks under 21, difficult to control drinking. I have no problem with renting out the center, but don't like the idea of trend of granting one day liquor licenses. I don't believe the town has denied a license in the past, but you should consider it at this point. I also got a phone call. I've never, ever gotten any that had the same tenor about that. But I will say that I, I perceived this when I, when I read it, that it would be the first if we approved it. Liquor license we approved at a town building that contained, that had people under the age of 21 at that town building. And so Josh, I, I agree with you. I think you, you've hit the nail on the head. I apologize to the petitioner, Ms. Pizzuto, that, that this wasn't explained in advance when we said, yeah, we can, anybody can rent the adult center if they want to, but the liquor license is a whole, whole different story. And I think I've explained in the previous discussion my concern about liquor licenses in town buildings in general, but certainly with underage kids there, I, I'm, I got a real problem with it.
Josh, bye.
Yeah, Mary, yes.
So I think tonight's conversation is timely because after this discussion, we have an update on facility usage. So pre-COVID, this type of application likely would've come forward for the community house. And that was a practice that was done there quite a bit. It had, you know, similar auditorium, a kitchen. And I think what we're seeing now is the increased desire to be at the adult center because it's a brand new, beautiful facility. But this, there is the practice of doing this almost identical activity at the community house.
With under 21 on the application?
I, not while I've been here, I don't know.
And not while I've been here for 13 years.
But certainly events using the community house.
Oh, yeah. I can name, Leaf, we did it for Leaf all. Us very regularly and also one day liquor licenses to accompany that. You're absolutely right. But never with anybody under 21, not that I can ever recall. And Lynn's point is right. I mean, the, the adult center is nothing more than a venue different from the community house. And the community house, which is considered a little bit different ambiance than the adult center, I can see why. People would want to move over.
I could see that. But I guess I, as soon as I open my mouth, a lot of things come out. So I, that was just on my mind. But it's really the, under 21 is the sticking point. And that, I, I think, like I said, we don't have a stated policy, but if, that is the very least, that's where we have to start. And I just can't see allowing this on town property. It is too risky to me for reasons you mentioned before. Very hard to police that. I was a kid once, I know what goes on and I just, if you'd like to come up and speak.
So that's my application and your point exactly is why I don't want to host a graduation party at my home. Because as you know, kids find out where the parties are and they party hop. And, you know, this is not meant to disrespect anyone, but you all have drink cups in there, which I'm assuming is water, maybe coffee. But inside those containers, there is no way for me as a parent to first control in my backyard, people coming in and out of my home, going into a cooler, taking a beverage and putting it into a cup like you're having. Tom, I can see yours is a water bottle, but I don't know what you have in your cups. I don't know what people put in red solo cups. And so the reason why I wanted to have a party not at my home was to prevent any underage drinking. As you know, there was a recent accident that took the life of a child. And I can't be that parent that had some kids coming into my house that I couldn't watch. And I don't know if you host parties at your house and 40 peoples and a DJ. 23 of those people are my immediate family. 10 are my unimmediate family, my cousins, my aunts and uncles. Six, my son and his five kid, his five closest friends are the underage drinkers. And I can absolutely watch six kids in a closed room door where you're invited to come in and there's no one else in the building, that is just my immediate family. But that's the reason why I wanted to host a party outside of my home was so I can control the drinking. I have a bartender who's gonna hand an adult a glass of wine or a.
I appreciate the sentiment and I hope you can understand our position, or at least my position, that you may be responsible, the next person may not be. If you want to have a party at the adult center with a DJ, rent it out and do it without beer and wine. That's the safest thing to do.
That's fine. I can, I can absolutely see your point that being a town property, that wasn't brought to my attention when I went to go and look at the property. I had a lot of different, I had a lot of different options. And now a week and a half away from, you know, the event, you know, if I had known that when I talked to Jim, and this is no offense to you, I would've looked at other facilities, but it's down the street from my house. We can walk over. It, it felt like, and yes, it's a, it's a beautiful space. And, you know, you just talked about not having enough revenue to even support the center. This is about, what, $1,800 worth of revenue for someone to unlock a door on a Saturday afternoon when the building's not in use. You know, so I'm sure that's what Jim sees it as a way to have revenue coming into the adult center. So, you know, that's, you know.
Ms. Pizzuto, I appreciate your comments. Thank you. I, I just need to comment that, that the issue has always been in this town is not you or not the location, it's the people who are uninvited guests.
Correct.
And just as you said, you can't control them in your house. My fear is there's no improved way of controlling them at the adult center. That's my fear. Whether it's true or not, I don't know.
Yeah, but it is. Because it's not a backyard that you can just open a gate and you don't have someone, you know, monitoring who's in, who's in and out.
You know, but, but I don't know that we plan on having, or who we'd have planning on watching the door. And, and, you know, you know, $1,800 is a ton of revenue for the town. But like I said, it, you know, what we just went through, the risk to me is just through the roof. You know, because all it takes is one uninvited guest, frankly, you know, who comes in and does the wrong thing or.
Well, I understand that.
And that's the thing that, that I fear isn't controllable. That's my concern here, you know, and, and so that, that's.
Your point is taken, I.
That's the purpose of my, and, and I apologize because had, you know, had we gone, put our left foot before our right foot, you'd have understood this before you came through and said, that's a good, great place to have a party. Hopefully, you still think it's a great place to have a party, but if you change your mind.
Well, probably not, you know, I have, you know, 35 adults that, you know, enjoy their, you know, like having a glass of wine with their Italian dinner. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking with us. And Mike, are there any other pending applications like this that we know?
Not the moment.
Okay. So I, I hope everyone is on notice in, in town if this is something in their mind. All right, so we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of the June 18th liquor, sorry, liquor license application from Laura Pizzuto? All those opposed? Any abstain? Onto review fees for fiscal year 2023 for the EMT, oh, I'm sorry, no. Proposed fees and additions first. Lynn, are you going to present this?
Yeah, let me just find where I am. I mean, if.
Yeah, that, let's do that.
It's all bundled under a fee conversation, so.
Oh, my, I skipped right over it. Yes, okay.
You good?
Yes, please. All right, thank you for being so patient. I did not.
No problem.
Didn't know that last one would go so long.
It's a good conversation. So I'm John Dear Ryan, you're Fire Chief Emergency Manager. This is Captain John Ringney. He's with me tonight. We just, the reason John's here is part of our succession plan for the Fire Department. I've been bringing my command staff into different functions in my position so they know the different processes of budgeting. Shana got to do with me this year. Obviously, setting EMS rates is an important aspect of the department every year because it's a very substantial revenue source. I could go through this or for lack of, for the sake of time, just some questions. I know Mark's been through this and Tom in the past. So obviously, expenses are going up quite a bit this year. Actually, operating portion of the Fire Department budget was decreased this year because of really impacted grant programs. However, the EMS allocations within the budget were all increased. I am concerned because we set the budget, you know, we were looking, obviously, the increases this year. Those increases in the expenses to operate are increasing exponentially. Maybe we watch his fuel costs, our costs for what we call our white goods, which is everything from Band-Aids, IV solutions to medications. Those are all going through the roof. Probably, they're probably higher than what I put in this document there. So I do have some concerns about operating within my current budget throughout the year. Obviously, we'll do our best, but I just want to be. To do some budget modifications, maybe pull some money out of EMS revenue to support this just based on the, the cost to operate. So if you see that the rate increases, they're more than our normal. We've really averaged in the last five years, three to 4% per year. We're in a 6% to 11% increase this year. And really, that's all based on operating expenses. We took a little bit of a dip during COVID, so we're a little bit behind on what we call our capital allotments. So we make a certain amount of revenue each year. That covers our operating expenses. But we also take above our operating expenses, whatever's left over, we put towards capital expenditures. So we have a capital plan for EMS. So we bank that. So the last two ambulants, for example, were paid for completely out of that account with no direct bill to the taxpayer. So we, we want to be revenue supported and sustainable. So these rates, it's a very similar process that, as to what Mark went through with the water rates. You know, we look at volume and predicted usage, bring them all together. We break out the expenses for EMS out of the operating budget for the Fire Department. And, and there's 12 different lines we pull from there. And then that's what we come up, setting the rates. We use historical data for number, the call volume. Obviously, you know, we're, we're dependent on people calling 911, so it's, but we do have enough historical data. Again, we dipped during COVID, so we fell a little bit behind our capital. We've, actually, we're at about 4%, 4.6% increase in run volume just in the last five months after COVID. And probably if we measured this last month, we'd be even higher than. So we're, we'll be back to our 1920 numbers, which are where our record years. We were 920, $930,000 those year, so.
So, you know, when I look at these rates and you compare to Medicare rates, so, so what happens when there's a gap between what, what we charge and?
It's capped.
Huh?
We don't collect any more than what's the, what the Medicare cap is.
There's no gap.
There is a cap.
There's a cap.
There's a gap.
It's capped, capped, you have to see.
Oh, yeah, no, each insurance company has their own cap. And so when they're, it is our rate, so that's all we can charge in those cases, right?
Right.
So, and, and then the other rates are looking at what, you know.
What a fully.
There's some insurances that will pay what you deserve.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so emergency medical services, emergency room, hot, initial hospital visits, are, they're billed at what the, the rate is, so, and are paid what the rate is. So there's not, we don't have negotiated rates with insurance companies.
All right, and you're, when you talk. All right. And you're, when you talk about expenses, or, you know, are you talking about needing additional equipment? Or are you talking about like fuel charges and stuff like that?
It's just day-to-day expenses to operate, our normal expenses, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Chief, thanks for putting this together. Quick question. So, let's say next year, we're going to have a Advanced Life Support One rate of twenty-two thousand thirty-two dollars. You'll take two thousand thirty-three dollars, okay? Let's say every call is that way, okay? Of that two thousand thirty-three dollars per person, what percent is actually collected because it's capped at something other than that?
So, that's a good question.
Off the top of your head.
Yeah, so probably fifty percent.
Okay. So, so in other words, I could argue that fifty percent of the people aren't even paying this, or maybe more than that because they're paying a lot
With the, with the Medicare adjustments, you know, it really comes out to about fifty percent. So, I'll give you an example. Over the past two months, we have, we have about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And there's something else we're working on, so I know these numbers off the top of my head. There's about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's built, right? We know right now, as of a couple days, Friday, I think I sent you that report, that out of that money, there's two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in collectible. So, it's roughly fifty
And, and it's never going to be collected. It's not just uncollected.
Well, so, of that collectible amount, we're right around ninety-four percent range, so.
But, but as you said to Tom, we don't, we don't balance bills. If, if you bill somebody two thousand thirty-three dollars and their insurance says we're paying eighteen hundred, you write, we write off the rest?
Uh, no. Actually, with, so if you're insured, you're on hook for the whole, whole amount. And it's only Medicare that we adjust, Medicare, Medicaid. So, and then obviously Connecticut Health and the other people that we deal with.
Okay. So, is that ninety-four percent that you had in the first line or first paragraph? That's
That's collectible revenue.
Okay.
Yep.
But, and I appreciate you putting all this together, and this is my first time through it. Explain about capping for Medicare and Medicaid. Because when I first saw the numbers, I said, oh, boy. But if you can, certain people will not have to pay, so that's good.
Right. And, and we do have a write-off process, payment process. I will, I'll be honest with you, we don't engage in it very often, but we do from time to time. There's somebody that had an issue in, in life. They, they're not carrying insurance at this moment, or, and we've had a handful of payment plans that people have engaged in. And I will compliment my, my administrative assistant, Andrea. When she gets on the phone with them, she normally can find an insurance program or something that, where they can apply their bill. She, she's, she's recently worked with somebody in town that thought they had no insurance and they had been to the emergency room several times. She actually found out that they're mass health eligible. Actually, it's just the person getting set up for that. So, they, at the end of the day, we got her money and they paid their bills, so.
Well, it's a great service to the people.
She, she knows her stuff, so.
It's great. Thank you.
She's the brain, true brains of the operation, so.
And, and our, our fees, you list them relative to Western Massachusetts, others within Massachusetts, and so we can kind of get a gauge that where we are relative to surrounding communities.
Yeah, and there are some that, so when I became chief seven years ago, or a little bit more than that now, there wasn't a lot of information out there. So, we engaged Western Mass Chiefs Association in doing a survey because I needed the information because I didn't know where we were at. And actually, that's a real popular survey now. It's really how we gauge each other because obviously, you want to be out in left field. I will tell you that the private sector is about thirty-five percent higher than what we charge. So, those ambulances, you see that don't have a town's name on them going by. But I just can't, I mean, just, it seems to be unreasonable.
So, I mean, for example, that'd be why East Long Meadow is going to, has gone to a municipal ambulance service when they never had one before?
Well, I think it's a lot of same advantages that, that we've, we've enjoyed. You offset so much expense of your fire service. But, you know, you think about it, you know, we're going to bring in nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars this year. Whether we're running ambulances or not, we're still doing EMS calls. We're still going to be sending the fire trucks out or, or some other type of vehicle out. These calls, you may be providing the service, but you're never, never going to, you're not going to enjoy any revenue. And you're not going to offset the cost for fire suppression, rescue, and all those other things. And they've realized the same benefit that we've enjoyed for twenty-six, seven years now.
Thank you.
All right. So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the fiscal year twenty-three rates for the emergency medical services for the Fire Department.
Second. All right. Any further discussion?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you again, Jim. Appreciate you.
Josh, just keep it down next time.
All right. And the twenty-twenty-two recycling center
Yes.
Proposed revision proposed through.
Yes. So, this, I can speak to this, as can Select Board Member Gold. This was, I requested the Recycling Commission take a fresh look at their rates now that we have new disposal contracts, our household bulky waste contracts. And so, they did that. And what you have in front of you tonight are amendments. It's also been a little unclear to me. In years past, these rates have just come forward to me on a memo and off on it. But I'd like these to follow the more traditional fee schedule from here on out so that they come to the Select Board and we have a conversation and hopefully you approve these rates. So, this would be annually now. But also, part of this conversation to review rates for recycling and trash was the single-use bags, the excess bags. So, for those of you that remember the Collins Center study, they highlight that in there. And so, the Recycling Commission did look at the single-use bag rates. They are a dollar seventy-six per bag right now. It's been that since two thousand and six. So, the Recycling Commission did unanimously approve raising the rate, the per-bag rate to two dollars per bag. And that would be effective, assuming the board approves it, as soon as the company we purchased the bags from can update our supply and, you know, charge appropriately.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and that, I was at the Recycling Committee meeting when they discussed it. They calculated the actual cost and it is two dollars a bag. So, I think it's like a dollar ninety-eight or s- and change, or something like that. But, but it, so
So, we were losing money before.
At a dollar seventy-five, we definitely are. But the, and the big, and the reason is why it's taking so long, as Lynn said, they got to be printed with new barcode systems because they're being sold at Big Y and stuff like that. And it's all got to be programs. But, but, you know, as do some of these, as do all these other fees, when it talks about car station wagon loads or truckloads. They talked to the attendants from the DPW who are down there, who said, you know, they wanted less ability for people to argue, oh, no, this is a twenty-dollar load, not a thirty. They wanted to set a more rigid numbers. So, it was less subjective and, you know, and more objective. And also because, as you may recall at our last meeting, we're paying more now for this bulk disposal of these big trailers because they can't go to, across the street to Bondi's Island. We had to bring them to a, out to Westfield, I think is where we're, we're taking.
This is going to Springfield, is this Republic?
Not the bulk. Republic couldn't take the bulk, remember? Republic can only take the, the, the trash, the, the door, trash. It's, it's Westfield, I believe. So, that, so anyway, it, these dumpsters down at the DPW where the stuff goes, it's costing us more to dispose of. So, you can see that the costs are relatively minimal going up. The biggest things are, you know, TVs and commuter monitors because that's what their actual charges are. I'll make a motion that we approve the Recycling Committee's revised fee structure, including the two-dollar per bag, blue bag.
I'll second that.
Ted, further question on the bags. If the actual cost of getting rid of the extra bags is a dollar ninety-eight or two, are we going to start losing money down on it next year or whenever oil prices go up?
No. Then we'll, then we'll raise the rates next year.
Well, it took sixteen years this time.
Well, that's because we didn't need to. I mean, until the rates went up, we didn't need to.
Oh, all right. Okay. I see.
It's my take on it. I mean,
Yeah, fair enough.
Not that you understand. I mean, you know, the additional bag, Josh, isn't intended to be a moneymaker. It's intended to cover our costs.
No, we shouldn't lose money on it.
Right.
Right. It should definitely be an annual review.
Okay.
That will be the intent moving forward, that this is looked at annually.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Okay. And then lastly, on fees, this is a miscellaneous memo that covers a bunch of different areas. So, as we were preparing the FY twenty-three budget, we started looking at fees. And as you'll see listed here, I'll just start with number one, the annual street listing book. We asked each department to take a look at fees, those that weren't capped by mass general law or bylaw. And we looked at, you know, what the market rate was for what other communities are charging and what our actually, our actual cost is to provide, you know, these certain items. So, the street listing book, the recommendation is to go from fifteen dollars to twenty-five. And you'll see that there's the explanation in here as to why. We don't get a tremendous amount, but they're large books. I'm sure, you know, those of you who have run for office, you probably get a street listing book. And so, you know that they're pretty thick and comprehensive.
Tell you how old everybody, tell you how old everybody in town is.
Yep. And, and again, this, you know, some of these fees are, are very old. They have not been looked at in a very long time. So, this was July of twenty-nine, uh, two thousand and nine. It's been that fee since, been that rate since then. I don't know if you want to take them individually or
Can I just ask a question about the street listing book? Do we get those printed or those, you know, is there an option to print on demand so that we're
We print them on demand.
We do. Okay, we already do that. All right. Thanks. So, we don't have a hundred or two hundred of them?
No, no.
We have to pay to recycle.
Okay. Thanks. I'll move we approve the fee increase for the annual street listing.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay. Number two here, the public hearing notification. This is the actual cost to cover those legal ads. So, it's gone up quite substantially, actually, but we have not looked at these fees in a very long time. And so, that, when the, when Long Meadow news closed and I think certain times were using the Republican instead of the reminder. It depends on the timing. So, we try to do the reminder because it's more cost advantageous, but sometimes, you know,
Reminder went up a lot, too.
Yeah.
Republican bought it.
Yes. So, these are, you'll see that, I mean, even in this case, I think we've, we're going to barely break even in some of these. So, again, this is a July twenty-nine, two thousand and nine. I keep saying twenty nineteen, but two thousand and nine, the last time this was looked at and increased.
I'll move we approve the increase in the public hearing notification fee from a hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
I would just say, this is also something we should look at more often as advertising keeps going up. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Great. And so, the last two are related to the tax collector's office. So, they've been looking at fees in there. And these are fees that we don't actually have right now. I did check the general law to see if there was any local adoption that we needed to do, and these do not require that. So, these would be fees to add. The first one is the ten-dollar fee for advertisement. This is if we have to do a taking, we'd add that ten-dollar fee on. And then the second one is a similar one. This would be a five-dollar notice posting fee for take, for uncollected real estate taxes. So, every property that, when it gets to a certain point, if there's uncollected real estate taxes, they have to post that notice, and this would charge a five-dollar fee for that.
Can we or do we charge for the advertisement and the reminder?
That is a good question. I do not know the answer to that.
Okay. And if we can, we should do that, too.
Yep. I can find that out, and you may have a fee next week, next meeting.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll move that we approve the advertising fee for the collector's office and the notice posting fee.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
And further fees, Adult Center facility rental fee and usage present, presentation.
Right. So, this has been one that we've talked about here, and I've been telling you that we've been working on the rental use fees and the forms. And we officially launched this just a couple weeks ago. Really, it's just a conversation with you tonight, but I think it's very timely because to the previous conversation about the short-term liquor licenses, there are, there is no policy right now preventing short-term liquor licenses on those, at the certain facilities. So, I think if they're, if we're going to look at doing a policy, I think having this conversation with both Parks and Rec and the Adult Center here is helpful because they obviously don't want to rent a facility out and explain to someone that you can have this if you can't. But also, want to share with you the forms that were developed. Can give you some background on it. A lot of this was very closely modeled after what the school department does for use of the school department facilities. And also looking at what other area communities are doing and what, specifically for the Adult Center, what charges are to rent other similar-type, almost banquet facilities because we're at that level there. And I think I, I alluded to this earlier, that this has been a longstanding practice at the Community House, that, that facility has been rented for many years, although it's not currently rented right now. And I don't think we have any plans to do that until fall at the earliest. But that is mainly due to lack of custodial. We just, we don't have the resources right now to be able to rent that facility out.
Right. But the rates for that facility, are they comparable? Because that's, that's very old.
For a community house?
This was very
Compared to the Adult Center?
And the Adult Center is very new.
No, they're, they're different.
So, yeah.
Yes, we took that into account. We spent many months talking about this and really trying to weigh all of the different possible uses that could come in. And Jim and Barry and their team worked really hard on, on getting this together.
All right.
So, I don't, do you, I don't know if you guys want to talk any, touch on anything I didn't address?
Yeah, I, I have, the one attachment is our rental fee chart, and I think that's the, the most updated version of our fee chart that we developed for specifically the new Adult Center. And we, we categorized, we came up with four categories that we thought were very relevant to the building and for certain organizations that may seek interest in using the Adult Center for certain services. And then we came up with the fee chart that was based around those categories. You know, we had weekday charts, weekday charges, weeknights and weekends. But I think the thing that we were most pleased with is that we were able to kind of separate the uses. And some of those are by towns, I'm sorry, by town use municipalities, specifically used by nonprofit, tax-exempt organizations in Long Meadow, used by other nonprofit organizations, groups outside of Long Meadow. And then the fourth category was all other uses, including private and non, and, and for-profit entities. So, yeah, this definitely was a work in progress. We had a whole team. We had a series of meetings with my staff, other departments. And I'm pleased that we came up with this. I think the rates are pretty clear. I think the categories are very clear. And, yeah, I think this continued to be looked at and adjusted. And we've kind of talked about reassessing all of this stuff each fiscal year. But, yeah, we're happy to basically just about go live with it.
Go ahead, Mike.
Jim, thanks for all this hard work. I'm sure it didn't, didn't come easy. I guess my, my question to you is, what does it really cost us to keep the center open on a weekend evening?
Yeah, we kind of came up with the fees because we were asking exactly what the, you know, how we were coming up with these costs. And, you know, we kind of consulted with Facilities Director, and he came up with certain averages that it would cost to heat the building, the electricity, and then we tried to tie into some staff costs, too. So, that's kind of where some of these numbers came from. But, you know, the facility's kind of manages those direct costs monthly. It's not, it's not something that I get like a monthly bill for, for those costs.
But, but it includes what I'll call overhead. Because I was concerned that it was only going to include, you know, the custodial or the
No.
Extra staff. But
Yeah, just, yeah.
The heat and light, I mean, the weekends, we generally turn the heat down and turn the lights off, so.
Absolutely, yeah. If we were just doing cost-wise, or I'm sorry, for staff laws, costs, it would be a lot lesser. So, we factored into all the overheads to come up with these, to make them reasonable, fair, and competitive, and then also try to attract if two people in the community to use the center. Because we've gotten a lot more, a lot more interest about the center in general for meetings, for, as we, you know, talked about tonight, that there's been interest for parties, a lot of different functions that we've been getting applications for, just asking if it's available for these types of things. So, yeah, and again, I think that we've worked really hard to come yeah, and again, I think that we worked really hard to come up with the, um, the rates per hour. But then again, I thought the most important thing was to have the separate categories, because there's so many groups that are reaching out. So they can be town departments, they could be, again, local nonprofits, nonprofits that are outside of Long Meadow, and then you're having your private groups that wanted to come in. So that's really helpful to us as a staff to really, to take, um, to take that into consideration, then figure out where we can, place these things in so that we can give an accurate, um, cost per hour if somebody wanted to use the facility.
So the, the, the other question I have i- is especially, you know, the, what I'll call is private usage, your, your category for, you know, the private, private parties or whatever it is, that, you know, do we charge or do we ask for a security deposit?
Yes, we do, yeah. Um, my application, I think we do a hundred and fifty dollar, a fifty dollar deposit for our classrooms. And then we do, we would do a hundred and fifty dollar deposit for our gymnasium and.
But those are deposits for, toward the rental, right?
Correct.
I mean, we've got a brand-new twenty-one million dollar building there. You know, I can imagine somebody coming in there and saying, "I'm using whatever," and all of a sudden, the next day, the gym's got black streaks throughout it, and we got to refinish the whole gym floor. And, you know, the hundred and fifty bucks that you got for the security deposit or the deposit isn't going to even begin to cover that.
All right.
And, and we'd have taken a beating on that, on that rental. And because we don't, you know, you're not going to be there, and I'm not going to be there, and very frankly, we're renting it out with maybe nobody being there. How do we, how do we protect the town's asset? I guess that's my question.
Sure, that's a good question. Uh, we would definitely have somebody in place. We do have staff that, um, we have in the evening times and on the, and if we were going to have weekend functions. Well, the adult center now has extended its hours into the evening time and on the weekends, on Saturdays, nine to one. So we have program assistants, so these program assistants would also have the ability to be, let's say, building facility supervisors for these types of functions. So if somebody was renting the gymnasium, a program assistant would get that group settled and then pretty much make sure that they're following all of our guidelines in place so that they are respectful to the facility.
And if they're renting a classroom, somehow we made sure they don't have access to the rest of the building then?
Correct, yeah, that's a stipulation. If they're paying X amount of dollars to rent, let's say, classroom one, that's the room that they're solely going to be using. So the, um, program assistant would go upstairs with the group to make sure that the room was set up the way that they intended for. And then they would, you know, monitor the, um, the, the meeting, the, the event, whatever it was, just to make sure that they're staying in that building and that they're not wandering to play pool, they're not going into the walking track, they're not using the fitness center, they're not sneaking into the kitchen, using anything in there. So we've definitely put controls in place for all of those things that you've talked about, because I think the, the last thing we want to do is, um, cause any harm to the building. Uh, we don't want to come in the next day to have any surprises. Um, you know, we have, we have a, you know, a dedicated staff that, um, are particular about our space, our settings, and all the things that, um, you know, kind of, everything at the center has a place. So we wouldn't want anything to, um, to be affected by that. So we've talked diligently about the controls of these kinds of events.
Okay, and the last thing is, I just want to try to understand, in category three versus category four, for the multipurpose room in the gymnasium, category three prices are higher than category four for the weekend? Why is that?
I don't.
Those might be typos then.
Typos? I'm not sure on that. Where would that be more?
It's one sixty versus one fifty and two ten versus two hundred.
The last two, um.
Well, that's weekday versus.
Oh, it's weekend versus weekend.
Yes.
Yeah, four doesn't, four isn't available for.
Yeah. Yeah, we do weekday, we, we kind of broke it down, and I'm not sure.
So there is no week, weekend?
It's on the third page.
It might be.
The table got.
I see.
Yeah, it's.
Thank you. Oh.
Table kind of continued to grow and grow, and it kind of got out of print settings here.
Classic Excel.
Yeah. So what we did was, you know, we tried to offer weekday, weeknight and weekend.
No, I see.
Yeah, the probability, I mean, the probability of having something in the weekday during normal business hours is probably pretty slim. Weeknights definitely more prevalent, and then weekend definitely. But we, we studied this thing and went through it over and over and over again, so I'm happy that you found it, because I can't imagine we'd have a typo. I'm sure probably somewhere in there, but we've gone over and gone over the, um, the rates to categories. And this isn't something that we just came up with, um, overnight, or this wasn't just myself or staff decision. This was working with multiple departments, analyzing other centers throughout the area, other community centers that are not in the area, but, you know, in Connecticut or in other states. The, the nice thing about our building is that we're unique. You know, we don't, um, there's not really another center in the area like us. There's not a lot of other community centers really in the area either, so. You know, and then to also open it up to the facilities component just really separates us, um, from a lot of organizations in general, but then to add the component of, um, you know, to letting people have the opportunity to use this building for meetings and special events or conferences or whatever. It's, um, you know, it's a like, nice amenity that we offer.
And, and just, this, from you and Barry, I guess, the revenue goes to the town or goes to the revol, revolving funds of the?
The general fund.
It goes to, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Magic to our ears.
So if the, um, if someone rented the gymnasium, is there a certain number of people where after that you have to have like a police officer on site? Is that something that we figured out?
I haven't come across that kind of a request yet, but if we did, I would probably, I would have to talk to the chief about those kinds of things. I've had interest about, um, certain groups maybe having, um, leagues in there or those types of things. You know, I don't really know what, how far they're talking about with leagues. Is it five-on-five? Is it a game or something like that? Are we talking like multiple hours of different teams and then league play and, you know, um, how big that could grow? I haven't really gotten that far yet, but, I mean, we're trying to be as prepared as we can for those kinds of requests. But, yeah, I mean.
Cause I know there's, there might be some, the chief would know. There might be some kind of calculation where you say. Cause just crowd control, I mean, there's a certain point where I have one person of your staff isn't going to be, I mean, they can call the police, but it's, you know, a lot of times they may have a person stationed.
Pickleball brings in a pretty good crowd right now, so we're doing okay so far with, um.
Not a rough crowd.
Yeah.
Not a rough crowd, but a nice.
Yeah.
And so then, do you think people will want to use it for weddings?
Maybe a smaller wedding. I think we might be set up for to do something in our multipurpose room. The gymnasium offers obviously the athletic option. I, I think the one thing that, you know, we're going to continue to do is, is market the facility. And I think we're just on the tip of the iceberg doing that. I mean, we're just really getting to this point to put it, um, to put it live and online. We really haven't mentioned too much about it yet in our newsletter. Got, you know, um, some interest here and there, I think by word of mouth. But once people do know that it is a venue, um, then, you know, we'll see what kinds of requests that we get.
Well, the request we had tonight was like a tip of the iceberg. You know, we, all communities, um, they, they wonder, what are we going to do with having teenage gatherings, you know? Because, you know, they, usually it's some parents who aren't at home, and it gets on the internet and there's a hundred and fifty kids in your backyard. And all communities have struggled with that. And so this, you know, request tonight was like saying, well, you know, we're just going to have six kids there, but, you know, but other people are going to say, well, can we have teenage parties? And the only effective teenage parties I know of in this town are the ones that the high school runs. You know, because they know the kids, they know the situation, they know everything, and they run them and they lock them in the gym, or they do something like that. But, yeah, that's going to be knocking on the door for you guys, because all communities are wondering how, how we get young people together, to have a dance or do something and not have it get out of control. And have you thought about that much?
Yeah, we've given a lot of thought about the safety, about, um, the supervision of the events. You know, obviously, a lot goes, um, on the person that's hosting it, and that would be, let's say, the supervisor or the applicant. But, um, I would put a lot of responsibility on myself and my staff to, um, to, to double ensure that, um, all guidelines are being followed, safety-wise, following all town policies, and then, you know, just the general maintenance and upkeep of the facility. Because again, the last thing we want to do is have damage to things like the gymnasium, have damage to, um, things in the multipurpose room, our audio and visual IT stuff. I mean, again, the amenities in that building are top of the line and top-quality things. So we would protect those to, um, to the fullest extent.
Yeah, I want to hopefully not get too involved, but bring up a discussion for the select board, and that is, the building was bought and paid for by the residents of the town of Long Meadow. What do we think about somebody from, I don't know, just, you, Boston, coming in saying, "Great, great spot, great facility, we want to rent it out." I mean, is there any thought at all that's saying it was bought by, paid for by the residents of Long Meadow? There ought to be an asset for the residents of Long Meadow. And yes, you know, if somebody who's a resident of Long Meadow says, "I want to have a private party," great, this is available to you. But do we really want to rent it out to somebody from Boston or from New Haven or from, you know, Great Barrington or something?
Like a destination wedding.
Well, the point, the point is, you know, you can say what you want to, it covers our costs, but there's wear and tear on the building. It's a brand-new building, it's our facility. You know, if, if we got to the point where, I mean, not got rid of this, you know, people are renting it out every, every night or every day or every weekend, this thing would get used up, pardon the expression, pretty quickly, and our seniors would find themselves with a less than brand-new building in about six months. So the question is, how do we want, you know, how do we want to manage this? Because if we say, "We're putting it on the web for anybody to," then we have a very, very difficult time saying to somebody, "Sorry, no, you can't do it." And it's not because we don't like the event you're having, you know, because we can't do that. You know, once it's available, it's available. We can turn down liquor licenses, but, you know, you, you can't pick and choose who you rent it to, unless we have a policy that says the lead renter has to be a resident of the town of Long Meadow. I support that. I don't know, Len, you were going to say something.
Yeah, so I, I know on the, uh, community house in Greenwood forums, there's an additional charge if you're not a resident. But we did start discussing this, and we were quickly getting bogged down with all the what-ifs, what-ifs, what if this happens, what if that happens? And we finally said, "Let's view this as a pilot year. Let's see what happens and see what the kind of demand and use will be of the facility, and then we'll readdress it next year." So, eh, at least that's how we've decided to approach this right now. If you guys feel differently, we could certainly take that back and discuss it. But we were really trying to see what happened this first year before we tried to tackle every single what-if that could come up. And I, I agree with you to your point, like, maybe it should just be in, you know, the Western Mass region or just Long Meadow. Um, but if that's the case, then we'd probably want to go back and look at what we do for Greenwood Center and the community house. Because that's why we started looking at these, um, together so that we're consistent, so that one, um, use at Greenwood is the same as the adult center or community house, so that we weren't letting different groups do different things or being, um, assessed different ways.
No offense intended, but the use of the community house has less risk than the use, use of the, of, of, of the adult center. And, you know, only because, you know, it is what it is. I mean, but, but I, I understand what you're saying. I just hope, A, that for this year, things go really well and we don't end up regretting that we took this, let's try it for a year. And the other thing is, can we walk it back after a year if we don't like it?
I think so. It's not like you can book a calendar and say, "I'm taking these three hours." They have to apply, right? So if somebody from Long Meadows, if it overlaps, you're going to take the Long Meadow away.
Well, no, no. Somebody says, says, "Jim, I want to, I want to rent this thing for September eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth," or something like that. Jim's going to rent it out. And if somebody from Long Meadow comes in the next two weeks later and says, "I'd like September nineteenth, sorry, it's rented out."
Right, it's on a first-come, first-basis.
First-come, first-served basis.
And as long as that there's no, um, adult center programming conflict. So if we had something going on that night that was already scheduled at the adult center, we had an event, then we would tell them that we couldn't do it. But if, you know, if there was another night available, then we probably could accommodate.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just not terribly worried, I guess.
I, I hope there's no reason to worry, but I just see that, you know, we've got a bunch of venues in the Western Massachusetts that attract people from outside Western Massachusetts. I know, because I run a couple of them, and people come for the basketball Hall of Fame, they may come for MGM, and they're, you know, they go on the web and, you know, Google does a great thing, says, "Where's someplace I can hold a, uh, an event before and after or during?" You know, that's my only concern, Josh. And I'm not, I'm not saying don't do it. I, I buy into linear, let's try it. But, but again, I think the residents of Long Meadow need to, you know, be protective, is the best way I can put it.
And, and it's easier to start with a more conservative approach and then slowly expand than to leave a wide-open door and see what walks in it. You know, then, that's your, you know, you're like Mark is saying, you don't know who's going to walk in, and then they'll say, "Well, you can't discriminate against me." You know, you know, and it's like, you know.
And I think that's what's the reason of, um, creating the categories, because again, we were trying to, um, to analyze a lot of the groups that had interest at Greenwood or had, um, some requests to use other facilities throughout the towns. So I thought that that was really important for us to at least have that as our first step to really say, "Okay, this group can go here, this group can go there." And then everything can kind of fall into place with the applicants, and then, you know, kind of, um, then, you know, take all of that information to see kind of where the rates come in and then see the volume of the requests that we get.
Now, another thing is, on our liquor license, we have, you know, beer and wine and then hard liquor. And if you got, come to any conclusion about having events that would serve a full bar, a full bar there?
There's only very specific criteria. Someone could be granted a short-term, um, all-alcohol liquor license. Mass. general law only allows it for a nonprofit.
Mm-hmm, okay. So that would be a no, that there wouldn't be?
Um, and.
Huh?
There could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that changes things significantly too. You know, when you start looking at serving hard liquor.
But that's a separate application like we have tonight.
No, I know it'd come to us, but.
We can formulate the policy.
But, right.
And it sounds like we should have that conversation.
Yeah. You know, because it does, um, changes the event, you know, it's just, well.
Yeah, I mean, you know, even our, you know, yes, it's roads, but our road closure, you know, all that requires the police to, police chief to, to comment on it. Now, hopefully, at the adult center, we don't need a police chief commenting on every application, but there may be some that we do.
Yeah, I just, you know, I mean, I, I had events when I was dorm director, you know, and then, you know, next thing you know, the kids are breaking up the toilets in the bathroom, you know, and they're totally out of control, and it's like, and you just think, these, this, you know, it's almost an Ivy League school, and this is the way the kids are acting, you know? So you, you can't really predict how people are going to act if they're drinking hard liquor and all that stuff too, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Will you, will you approve the?
I, I, I think we should wait on this. I, I.
You don't want to?
I don't think we should. I think that we don't have a complete board. And I think, I thought, we talked about a policy of introducing things at one session and then voting in a future session. And I didn't think we were going to be voting on this tonight.
I'm good with that, Tom.
I mean.
So I, I'm not sure, other than the fees, there's really nothing else I, we need you to vote on.
Right.
It's just the fees. The use of the facilities are.
No, not policy issues.
Correct. We're happy to take your feedback, your recommendations, your suggested changes on that.
And frankly, do, I don't think we have any basis for questioning the fees, unless we say, "We want you to charge five thousand dollars a night" or something, but.
It sounds like our way into the fees.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any basis for questioning the fee.
Yeah. So you, you feel we should move on tonight then?
Yeah, I think we should approve the fees. How move we approve this, these fees for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three? For the adult center as presented?
All right, I'll second it then.
All right, any further discussion? All of us in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Board and commission handbook review draft code of conduct.
Len, are you presenting this one as well?
I can, yes. Uh, so I could present some of this. So, let's see, uh, obviously, you're renewing a lot of board and committee, um, appointments right now. Uh, we came across a handbook in the office that we thought was pretty useful and realized it has not been looked at, um, in about five years. Uh, so we wanted to bring that to your attention to just see if there's anything in there that needs to be revised, and then we'll make sure that this is being handed out to all applicants once they're approved. Uh, but then additionally, we started having some conversation regarding, um, a code of conduct. Many other communities have adopted one for board and committee commission members. It would be something that would be signed, uh, once they're sworn in. And it kind of just sets a tone for what the expectation is when you're serving as a volunteer. you're serving, uh, as a volunteer on a board or committee, uh, that you're representing the town. So we did have a draft document here. It's based off of another community's, and so we thought, uh, we'd present this here to you to, um, just at least have a conversation about. If you choose to further that, that's fine. If you don't feel like now's the right time, um, that's fine as well.
Mark? Yeah, I, I read through it. I, I think it's good. What, what struck me, though, in this code of conduct document was that, or the Appointment Committee Handbook, nowhere did it say, you know, because it's interesting, at the bottom, you, you sign, "I've received this," that's the, except, nowhere does it say, "I have read, understand, and will follow all state regulations regarding open meeting law," you know, all, all the stuff that we have to approve all, all the time. I, I would have thought that that...
Isn't that separate? Because we have to do a training and certify to Kathy.
But, well, then, then there's a duplication, Josh, because if we need to do that, then why are we doing this?
Well, that's just open meeting law.
What?
I mean, I know just, there, yes, there is, uh, open meeting law included in here, but this goes beyond.
Right, and I, I think it's both. Um, you do have to do the conflict of interest test, and then you do have to, um, sign for the open meeting law. Um, but this does cover quite a few other things.
You know, I, I just, Lynn, I mean, all I saw, what it said was, you know, that it would, you know, "I'm responsible for understanding and agreeing to all state rules regarding open meeting laws, conflict of interests, et cetera." I would think that since this was written or something, those ought to be included in there, that as a, as, certainly as the part of the, I guess we're calling it the code of handbook, the handbook, that employees are, that volunteers are responsible for understanding and following state laws. It didn't say that anywhere in there.
And you're talking about the, the book, not the code of conduct?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure I'm following in the right place. I mean, certainly, it's, at this point, it's five years old. I mean, even the reference to meetings, um, doesn't speak about the hybrid aspect. So I don't know how deep we wanna go in revising this. Um...
It, it also doesn't mention anything about attendance, his responsibility.
I believe there actually, I would have to look into it. I believe it actually is, I believe there actually is a section in there about attendance and meetings.
Oh, in the book?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alright.
Oh, yeah, it's on page eight.
That committee members are expected to attend a reasonable...
Yeah, page eight.
Regularly attend meetings.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I must have read it at some point.
So are we, are we voting on the code?
I don't think we're voting on anything right now. I, I just, I think it's a good idea. I think anybody who's a volunteer member of a board or a committee ought to, ought to get something like this and ought to acknowledge that they've received it. You know, we have a tough time getting people to sit through open meeting laws, and frankly, you know, Josh, none of us have checked with Kathy how many people are actually doing the training and not doing it. Are, are we throwing people off the board because we're not doing it? Is Kathy even sending us a report that these three people didn't do it? You can't renew their, maybe that's, should be a requirement before we renew people who come before us to go on the board if they've been up to date with their training. I don't...
That's a good point.
I mean, for the most part, I mean, you know, communicating well with volunteers in town is, to me, is a great thing. We can't, you know, overdo it, so I'm fine with it.
So we're taking no action tonight?
Yeah, we can have this come back at your next meeting, which would line up nicely with a lot of the new appointments going forward. We could make sure they get this if you're ready to vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Right.
And, Lynn, I hate to be, but, and what happens when, I mean, is, is removal from your committee the, the remedy if you're found to be not following this code of conduct? Is that, you know, and where's, where does it say that?
Right, and it does not. And this is what a lot of communities have done. It, um, it can be difficult to try, to remove someone unless there's something very egregious, but, um, it more sets the tone.
Fine.
It's, um, aspirational.
That's fine. Need aspirational things.
Okay, and, uh, on correspondence, uh, I'd like to commend our eighth-grade students at Williams on the civics project on the sidewalks.
Yeah, can I, now that you brought that up, Josh, I, I think it'd be worth, and I was gonna suggest the chair send a response letter to them, so they know that their letter was heard and received, whatever it, I mean, for people who aren't at home, don't know what this is, that we got a great letter from the eighth grade at Williams, I don't know if the whole eighth grade, but eighth graders at Williams Middle School, who essentially did a survey of a bunch of sidewalks around their school, telling us everything that's wrong with them. And I'm sure they're very, very correct with these things. But it would certainly be great for us to send them a, a response. And I think it, the, the letter came to the select board, it ought to, the response ought to come back from the select board.
And I just have additional on that as well. The town engineer actually sent a, the letter also was sent to the town engineer, and he sent a very detailed response to, uh, the civic actions group detailing, you know, how the process of determining which sidewalks need to be restored and stuff like that happens as well. So, so they reached back out to them also.
That's great. And I apologize if I'm saying the name wrong. Taya, Mackenzie, Graham, Addie, and Grace. Thank you very much, and we will respond, and, uh, we're gonna get mention in the reminder write-up.
I'll share you guys a copy with that.
Yeah, Lynn, I don't know if you want a coordinator, Mike, with, with, I think you ought to go out over Steve's signature or something, but...
Sure, we can do that. And, um, just, I can also tell you that tomorrow, the Assistant Town Manager and I are attending the, uh, Williams Middle School Action Civics Showcase, where we get to see what they've all been working on.
Oh, great.
Let them know we got their letter. It was a great letter.
And I'm also happy to, uh, that the historic district violation has, I can put a bow on that. It was, they had not received notice, so I'm glad it's all taken care of. Um, so, uh, anything further?
I had, you know, one comment. And we, um, there was a letter sent to all members of the select board from, um, one of my neighbors who was, um, you know, he had a whole list of concerns about a bee's hive that, a beehive that my wife is putting in. And so because contacting members of the select board and telling them what was going on would have been a violation of open meeting law, I have to mention it tonight to tell you that I do have a, an email here from Finn McCool, uh, from the Director of Public Health, saying to my wife, "Jean," it says, "Dear Jean, thank you for this. It looks like you're following all the proper protocols." And, um, so even though there was a fairly long list of complaints in the, the, the letter that was sent to the board, um, all those have been addressed. And, um, and, you know, we, we like to think we're making some progress with our neighbors in terms of accepting the, the beehive. We had one there in two thousand and five, and we had it for many years, and there was no incidences. And so we're hoping to have the same success with this one. But, um, I thought I'd tell you here, an open meeting, so...
Okay.
I'd like to make a move that we adjourn. Motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you.